I call the meeting to order. This is the Oregon City Commission, and today is Wednesday, April 15th. Good evening. I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
Good evening, Daphne West, Commission President.
James Nacita, City Commissioner.
Doug Neely, City Commissioner.
Rocky Smetz, City Commissioner.
Would you please stand and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you all know, this is the sesquicentennial of Oregon's birthday, and Oregon City has a series of activities going on. In fact, coming up this Saturday, two Saturdays, so one Saturday, April 18th, whenever that is, this coming Saturday, is April 18th, is Take Care of Oregon Day, Oregon City version. And we have a number of projects on the docket. Look at the city's website and at OC150.com for the activities that would be going on. And one of the other things that Oregon City is doing, as well as the rest of the state, is everybody reads. And everybody is reading The Stubborn Twig by Lauren Kessler. It was given to me free, as it will be, as it can be to any of you, by the Oregon Library Association, with the caveat that we keep it moving. So my husband and I have both read it. Whoever puts their hand up first can have the next copy. You just have to keep it moving. There you go. Enjoy. It is a very, very enlightening book about Japanese internment, and you will particularly enjoy it if you have any roots at all in the town of Hood River. It's absolutely fascinating, and it's a nonfiction book. So I encourage you all to get it, or wait for Commissioner Smith to finish it and then go forth.
It'll be a couple of years.
Hey, sesquicentennial only lasts to the end of the year. It's also my great pleasure, which was just given to me a few moments ago, to announce that Oregon City, our Beaver Creek Road project, was selected as one of the Public Works Projects of the Year for 2009 by the American Public Works Association. And I think that's a very exciting honor that we have. So congratulations to our Public Works Department. This is a huge credit to Nancy Crashauer, who is our Public Works Director, and her staff for making sure that this project came out so fantastically. And as I recall, because that was finished early in my term, that we had so many people that said it wasn't going to work, we couldn't do it. In fact, even a former Clackamas County Commissioner wrote us a letter that said, "This is an ill-advised project." Take it from there, Commissioner Soa, we have an award winner. And there's going to be a national ceremony that will be held on Monday, September 14th, in Columbus, Ohio. And I'm hoping that we'll get to send someone from here to go receive that award. So Nancy, did you have any comments on this? Because you just handed this to me, and it sounds like a wonderful award.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'll just take a couple of seconds. We originally applied for a Project of the Year Award through the Oregon Chapter of the American Public Works Association, and we did receive honorable mention in that process. And then we were encouraged to apply for a national award, and the Oregon Chapter sent three projects, of which we were one of the awards. Our category is transportation, under $5 million. And from what I understand, there were 33 applicants in our category from around the nation, and we were the sole beneficiary of the award. And in terms of Oregon, we've been submitting projects now for the last three years. The first year, we did receive a national award. The next two years, we did not. So we're feeling very proud that we bring another award home to Oregon, the Oregon Chapter as well. And we're excited. Thank you.
That's exciting, too. Okay, next.
Before you move on, if I might.
Yes, Commissioner Neely.
You mentioned the April 18th activities. I would point out that although this is the 150th anniversary, I think we've had the Oregon City cleanup going on for about 20 years or more. This is that event, and the meeting time, I believe, at Clackamas Park is at 9:00 a.m., is that correct?
8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m. Sam, what I asked.
And bring a can of food. It's also the kickoff of the Oregon City Annual Food Drive, that's now the Sesquicentennial Food Drive this year. So that will be one of the first collection points. So come with food, come with gloves, though we will have some there. Come with mussels, and your friends, and tools, and we'll be glad to put you to work taking care of Oregon City during Take Care of Oregon Day, which is also Earth Day. So with that, we have some citizen comment this evening. I have three forms when you come up to talk to us. Please, if you write legibly, all you have to say is that you are Alice Norris. You live in Oregon City, or Clackamas County, or Gladstone, wherever you live, and then you may speak to us for up to three minutes.
There are going to be three people introducing themselves as Alice Norris?
All named Alice, yeah.
Well, you know, there's a lot of clones out there. And we ask that you come up to, come in and speak on a non-agenda item. Paula Lewis, followed by William Becker.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Paula Lewis. I live in Oregon City. I am here to get support from the City of Oregon City Commission. I made a presentation to commemorate the 158th statehood with a friend of mine to paint a mural at the Clackamas Park skate park. I had made a presentation at the P-RAC meeting, PrAC meeting, a couple of weeks ago, got recommendation from them. I do have an email from the Oregon City, or excuse me, the Clackamas County Arts Commission, and, oh, where is it? Arts Alliance, and that we have the support from the Arts Alliance as well, since I was seeking approval from any arts commission that might have some concerns about it. So being on city property, the county coalition did not have any objections to it. So I do have a sketch available. Rocky has helped me develop this idea, and I would just like support from the city.
It's my understanding, Paula, that you are going to apply for a Oregon 150 Legacy Grant?
That's correct.
Okay. So it was my understanding that your project really encompassed that grant as well, and that as soon as your funding was fully finished, then I think it's appropriate that we appoint a task force, because normally we have a public art process when we place art in public places. And so we'd like to put together a, I've talked with Commissioner Smith about this, put together a task force to, and it's prescribed in our public art policy, it'll be a couple of people from the department, so that's the Parks and Recreation Department, somebody from the neighborhood, a couple of artists. It's in our public art policy, which hopefully is online. Anyway, when your funding is complete, come back and talk, and we'll talk.
Oh, thank you. Good. I intend to go ahead and apply for it. Thank you.
May I ask a question from Scott Archer? Is there a recommendation that's actually coming from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee?
Well, they-
Based on representation?
They supported Ms. Lewis's presentation, I would say that. And they made some type of motion, I'd have to go back and check the minutes, what they said exactly, but they supported and made some sort of recommendation motion that it be allowed to proceed through the normal processes, with the understanding that there are some review processes for the public art policy and so forth. So, yes.
Commissioner Smith.
I think that we probably should at least start the process that we discussed in terms of the task force, or whatever group would be needed to approve public art. I think one of the things that Paula and I know that J.D. has discussed with me is that they are applying for this grant, but we're not, they're not staking this whole project on whether or not they get grant money from that grant. I think that they, we're not talking about a project that is a huge substantial amount of money. I think we're talking $1,000, or maybe $2,000. And both of these two individuals have the ability to seek donations, and I think that, so regardless of the way that the grant goes-
Time to get going.
I think the project is something that will continue on regardless of what the grant determines. So I think that the next step in terms of how that gets approved by the city needs to be addressed, even if the grant funding doesn't come through.
Okay. We'd like to, yes. Okay, go on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. William Becker?
Hello, I'm William Becker, and I live in Portland now, but I grew up here, and my family still lives here. Actually, I have a handout if-
Sure.
And I'd like to address the heritage organizations in Oregon City and the situation with that, and also a new program that's coming out through the National Park System, and how I think maybe all of this can be combined together. Basically, from what I have been seeing in the meetings, and as somebody with a bachelor's in history, and a master's in public administration, and a lot of nonprofit work, I would recommend that the city and the county both not bail CHP out. I think they should just go ahead and fold. They haven't managed the museums well, otherwise they wouldn't be in the position they're in. And there's an appearance that they haven't been operating on good faith. They haven't provided the information and documentation that's been requested. And this, I was at the meeting last time where they brought up this RFP from the state parks for this grant that they'd been working on for several months, and yet they bring it up to the City Commission two days before it's due, which is kind of holding people hostage in a sense. The CHP hasn't fulfilled its mission in promoting all of the Oregon City museums. And from what Commissioner Neely said at the last meeting, it appears that they've broken their contract with the city. When I asked at the last CHP fundraising meeting if I could see fundraising plans, strategic plans, that kind of thing, at first I was told that parts of those could be made available. And then later in the meeting, it was said that the museums needed to be kept open in order to develop those plans, which indicates to me that the plans never existed, and they should have been the basis for running the organization from the beginning. Also, CHP said at the last fundraising meeting that what they need from the city and from the county is $50,000 a year for three years, with CHP also raising 50, in order to have any credibility with their long-term foundation partners. And that's a little different story than we've been presented here. And the City Commission has a fiduciary responsibility to spend the public's money wisely. And I think that as long as CHP's in charge of the museums, it's not a wise choice of funding.
You have 32 seconds.
Okay. Now, the National Park Service is developing interpretive centers across the Northwest regarding the Missoula Flood, Ice Floods. And one of the spots is Oregon City. And I'm thinking that pulling all the museums together along with that in Oregon City, because it was that flood that provided the fertility for the valley that made it successful for the pioneers to settle here. Great. Thank you.
Just as a word of explanation, there is an Ice Age Flood Organization and a site in West Lynn. Next is Paul Edgar and Laverne Bauer.
Madam Mayor, City Commissioners, Paul Edgar, citizen of Oregon City. Tonight, we talked briefly about the cleanup, and one of the people that really handled the cleanup for 20 years was, is a good friend of Oregon City, Jerry Herman. Jerry is now almost being evicted, out of space that he's been doing, been operating in good faith for the city. And it's almost crazy that problems would exist with Jerry. Anybody that knows Jerry knows his heart is just beyond approach. Everybody knows that as an ecologist, Jerry is just A number one. He loves every tree, every bug, every little animal, every fish. But right now, and it almost appears in a vindictive way, that Jerry's being harassed in a very malicious appearance. And I just don't understand it, but it's just so ugly, because anyone that knows Jerry knows that he hasn't done anything but try to help the cove, help the environment, help our city, help everything. And so I just would like very much for you people to look at it, because what's happening is just beyond my ability to understand. And I think you all know and respect Jerry, and you know that he's a good person, and he's doing good things for our city, and he hasn't damaged anything. Thank you very much.
You must be talking about the River Resource Museum that's on the Gladstone property?
It's some of the city property. And I think if you were to ask Nancy Bush to take a look, or get a look at what has been presented to Jerry from the city immediately, and try to get an understanding of how this could ever happen, there was even understandings that nothing, if there was anything that anybody had to say, that they could talk directly to Jerry. Jerry's, you know, was more than approachable on anything.
Thank you.
And for it to get out of hand and out of control is just wrong.
Thank you. Next, Laverne Bauer.
Hello.
Hi.
I've never done this before, so bear with me. My name is Laverne Bauer. I live here in Oregon City.
Great.
And I have a unique situation. I will just show you this map, and I don't know how much of you can see, but if you see this little spot here that's taped in, this is all, okay, the part around all of it is Oregon City. The little spot taped in happens to be my backyard, and it is in the county. When the city pulled in that particular unit of land, it missed that property. I missed it. And about two years, about a year and a half ago, somebody wanted to buy a corner of it, and they came to the county and looked up the records and discovered that it was in the county instead of in the city. And that's when I found out. So here a while back, I decided I better do something about this. And I went to Tony and talked to him about it, and he called me the other day to tell me that he has found a way to bring that piece of property in without having to go through all the rigmarole of going, you know, to the vote and all this sort of thing. Unfortunately, he says there is a cost of $250 for the maps, and up to, and possibly exceeding, $750 for the clerical work and so on that it would take to bring this in. And that's why I'm here. I don't feel that's right. I felt that it was missed in the first place, and that it needs to be brought, you know, into the city where it should be.
Thank you.
Without that expense.
Can we turn that to you to talk about? Okay. Why don't you give that map back, or maybe to Larry?
Just for clarification-
Commissioner Neely.
What she's referring to is a few years ago, we, the city annexed in all the island properties. These were islands that were completely surrounded by the city. And I would hope there is a way to grandfather it in, because it didn't really require a decision by the voters. It was the commission that actually made the decision. And I imagine it should be able to be done in a fairly easy fashion, since it's an island. But anyway, I'll look, there's nothing easy.
Nothing easy, as I refer to.
If it was, in fact, an oversight, the intention, of course, was to catch all the islands, even though I voted against the island organization at the time.
Okay. We'll get a report back. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
And that concludes citizen comment. Did I miss anyone? Okay, thank you. Commissioner West is going to spend a short time with us this evening, and she's asked that we move some items forward. Do-
Yes. I'm wondering if, on the agenda tonight, if we could move up 7M and 7N. Well, I see that Rick Williams is here, so we'll do the, I prefer to, you know, honor our guest speaker here, and we'll do that, and then move them up after that.
Is that correct?
I don't have objection. I do know that there's one person that may be coming here that has interest in 7N, and perhaps if that person comes in, if that person comes in, it's not going to be in here until later-
Oh.
That we could, this is John Salzberg, and he would not be able to make it at the beginning, but he saw it was laid on the agenda.
Okay.
But we might be able, just if he comes in, just to take a moment to review what discussions and decisions were made.
Okay. So we'll begin our general business with 7A, and then 7M and 7N. Otherwise, we'll take the rest of the business in the order in which it is listed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll begin with 7A, which is that long-awaited downtown parking study. Mr. Patterson?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Commission, as you recall, downtown parking has been an ongoing issue, because we have a lot of different users, and that creates quite an issue downtown. And of course, one of our economic development goals has been, how do you make downtown a stronger commercial core? So early last year, you did commission a study for us to take a look at that, and we have engaged Rick Williams to look at this. And Mr. Williams is here with us this evening, and I'm going to let him give you a report on the effort we've been going through for the last, well, last year, actually. Rick?
Do I need that?
You'll need that. That's your guide to the universe.
And if you need to walk, you can pull off that mic that's right in front of you.
Oh, thank you. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, my name's Rick Williams. I'm the principal in the firm, Rick Williams Consulting. And we were gladly, we were proud to be commissioned to do this work. It's been a good process, and what I'd like to do, and hopefully you've received a copy of the executive summary, as well as there's a very long and detailed report.
Yeah, both.
So hopefully I can walk you through this, and take questions, and give you a sense of the recommendations of the advisory committee. And I want to start there, is we were fortunate enough to work with a 20-member advisory committee that came to meetings and had candid debate, and talked about visions and goals, and what they wanted downtown to look like, and who and where parking should be. And parking, as Larry indicated, is not an easy subject for a lot of people. It's a very emotional issue. You know, people come downtown, they want a place to park. And as Larry said, there's a lot of users here, and I really commend the 20-member panel who we put together and stuck with us through this. We met 10 times, and we could have met more, but Larry stopped that.
We are a region that meets.
Yes, we are. We conducted, and I'll go through this a little bit more in detail as in subsequent slides, but there was a very detailed parking inventory and capacity and utilization analysis that was conducted two different times. One before the trolley goes into operation in the summer, and then once when the trolley is in operation, to see if there were any effects. Real quickly, there weren't that many changes in the parking activity and dynamics because of that, but it was good to check it out. We did visioning and priorities. We held a public open house that the mayor attended in October. We went back with the committee and did strategy development. We took the data that we were able to compile, and we took the visioning work that we did, and we put the two together and saw how they matched up. And then where they didn't match up, what could we do to make them match up? The draft plan was released in January. I should say we had a great meeting up with the M&amp;A upon the bluff, and as well, I forgot to put that on here.
M&amp;A?
The Neighborhood Association.
Oh, McLaughlin Neighborhood Association?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I kind of just let that, M&amp;A. We met with the county commission in February to go over some concerns that, some sticking points that we had together within the group. We had a final stakeholder meeting in March, and we're here today. So that's, kind of gives you a real quick review of the one-year study process. Real quickly, the purpose of the study, bottom line, is to create a plan that supports the vibrancy of downtown. We heard a lot about the Main Street program in downtown Oregon City. I think that's wonderful. Some of you who know me, my background is in Main Street. I came right out of the National Main Street Center in Washington, DC. So what you're doing is fantastic. A plan, everybody said, you know, we want a plan that makes downtown vital and lets us grow to that vision of a Main Street with more commercial uses, great ground-level retail, residential, and functioning downtown. We also, the planned components need to be simple and intuitive. Parking, as I said, is not an easy subject. It's easy if you find a space, but if you don't find a space, it's not an easy subject. And so we want to make the plan simple and intuitive, not only for people who are implementing it, but also for people who are using the downtown. The plan needs to result in effective management of the city's on- and off-street supply. And one thing that's important to remember at all times during this is, at no point did we say, "We need to make the private sector do something." This plan is really focused on the assets that the city owns and controls. And then the plan is a model that we would want, as you'll see as one of the recommendations, a model for the private sector to use. If they can mimic what we're doing with the city's supply, then it's a better system for everyone. And we had some code and regulatory guidelines that we created as a result of it. Real quickly, there were some very key consensus themes at the beginning of the study. Why are we doing this? What's wrong with the system, or what works with the system? And the things we heard very clearly was, the parking system now is not easy to use. And believe it or not, you have 11 different types of parking on-street in your downtown today. And so, so it's not easy to use. Yeah, 11 different types of parking. So we heard that loud and clear. And so, as a result, the parking system is not formatted in a way that gets us to where we want to go. It may not be formatted in a way that meets existing uses and needs, and we also, it's not formatted in a way, or we don't have a direction to get us what we want it to look like. We all recognize there's unique uses in downtown Oregon City. I think that's what led to some of the real vivid and candid conversations that we had to have about all the users who use downtown. And there's competition for parking going on right now as we speak, on a typical day. So we need to structure the plan to assure that existing businesses benefit, but it also serves as an attractor to new business. And so the plan intends to do that. And we heard that very clearly, that that's what people want to do. Again, there always will be conflicts between employees and customers. So we have to agree on visions, guiding principles, and priorities. And I think that's the foundation piece to this plan, is getting agreement on that, because conflicts will always be in the parking system, unless you have more parking than you can afford to build. There needs to be better integration between the parking supply and other modes of access. I thought that was a great point that people made in Oregon City. They said, "What's wrong with our system? Not enough people are using alternative modes." This is a parking study, but people recognize that integration between parking and alternative modes, transit lacking and walking. And there were comments made about Oregon City's front-door curb appeal and the perceptions of downtown. It really wasn't part of the parking study, but it was a concern people had. The front door of Oregon City, when you're coming off the freeway, doesn't really yell downtown yet. We had two study zones, and I'll show them to you, one in the historic downtown, one on the bluff. We also did what we call the nodal analysis, which is an examination of that area in the downtown that has the highest concentration of parking use. We measured separately, we measured the two zones separately, so that we weren't understating parking. For instance, if we were counting underutilized space on the bluff and saying, "Well, that's downtown parking," that would create false statements. So we treated them both as unique and separate areas. We did two study days, as I told you, pre-trolley and post-trolley. And then we did a nine-hour survey on and off-street. We, as you'll see in the data, we surveyed every on-street stall every hour of the day for nine hours, and recorded every license plate. So we know, we have reams of data, block by block, block face by block face, of how parking works. We also did the same with off-street supply. The downtown study zone, as you can see, is within the study map there. There's 1,260 total stalls within that study area in the historic downtown. 392 of those stalls are on-street, and 868 are off-street. And as I said, when we went out and surveyed stalls, we did a 100% sample of the on-street system, and we were able to sample 637 of the 868 off-street stalls. So overall, we had an 82% sample, which is really quite significant. In the bluff, there's actually more stalls, 765 total stalls, as you can see, on and off-street supply. We are able to do 100% sample of the on-street supply, and about a 90% sample of the off-street supply, so we had a 92% sample on the bluff. So we think any variations in the difference between that sample and the total supply is really marginal. Then the nodal- Then, the nodal analysis is the area, what we call the area of highest concentration. In the parking industry, when an area is 85% occupied or more in the peak hour, it's considered constrained. And so, we wanted to find out, if there is an area within any of these study zones that exceeds that threshold for significant amounts of time during the day, we want to know where it is. So, we had to go through and sift through the data and find that. And you'll see, that area is in the historic core, and it is within these boundaries. And I think it's between 11th...my eyes are bad, 11th and 6th, and railroad, and McLaughlin, and then the little spur in the middle. That represents a lot of your retail core, too. When we talk to folks about, you know, the heart of downtown, it lies within that node. There's 231 on-street stalls within that node, which is 60% of your entire on-street supply for the downtown. And it's 89.4% occupied in the peak hour, but for about a four- or five-hour period, it exceeds 85%. So, it's a very, very constrained piece of your downtown. Interestingly, 35% of all the on-street parking in that zone is, at this time, allocated to employee uses. So, we have employees parking on the street in the highest zone of occupancy. And so, if we were to try to say, "How do we get it back to 85%? Or how do we get it back under 85% so we could at least say it's not constrained?" We would say that you need to find 20 parking stalls to bring that system back into balance, so it has a quote-unquote deficit of 20 stalls. We worked with the group on guiding principles, and it was tough for the group, because they wanted to talk about parking first, and they wanted to get into the data and into the strategies. And we have what we call the parking handcuffs, where we don't let them do that. We wanted them to state to us what the priorities for parking should be. So, if we're all parking czars, we have to start with, who should be parking where? Who is the priority for parking? And what tough decisions do we need to make if we run into those conflicts for competition of parking, when we exceed the 85% rule? So, the guiding principles that...and these are just the key ones. The report has, I think there's nine...22 guiding principle statements and nine themes. But the city controlled and owned parking should be managed to prioritize visits of two hours or less. We had a lot of discussion on this. We tried to define customer. We tried to come up with different definitions of a way to look at people who work downtown, who are jurors, who are visitors to business, who are visitors to retail. But what we finally landed on was, what we're really trying to do with the on-street system is give it to the people who are in downtown two hours or less. And the reason that we chose the two hours or less is, we found that when we took the people who are currently parking on-street, who are employees, and took them out of the mix, the actual average stay in downtown is about 1.6 hours. So, those who are really using the on-street system to really visit businesses, whether it be a retail ground-level business, or a business up above, is turning over at about 1.6 hours a turn. So, a two-hour stay on-street gives us what we want. If we can do that, we can...and about 95% of the people who are in that category are parking for 1.6 hours. On-street parking needs to be managed to provide a rate of customer patron turnover that supports downtown vitality. And we're lucky to have some Main Street folks here tonight that we met with. I used to work for a company that located businesses in downtowns. And we used to go out and stand on street corners and count cars, and we'd count pedestrians. A locator for a retail business will look for a downtown whose parking supply is turning over at about a rate of five turns per day. That's a minimum level of what's considered attractive to retail, or attractive to a ground-level business. If you can get above that...so, if you have a two-hour time stay, and everybody departs for two hours, and you have a 10-hour business day, it would turn over five times. At 1.6 hours, your average customer stay, if you didn't have those visitors on the street, you'd be turning at a rate somewhat over five, which is very good. The higher...Cokerlin, Washington, is one of the highest I've ever seen. Their downtown turns over at 8.6 times a day, so very, very high traffic. What we found, though, is, in your system, you're turning over at 4.6 times a day right now. And so, this guiding principle helps us set a standard that says, "We want the on-street system to turn over to attract business, support existing business, and so, we have a standard, and that's a guiding principle." Now, we know if we're not meeting the standard, we need to implement strategies to get us there. Manage the public parking supply using the 85% rule, very easy concept for the group to agree to. 85% is a great threshold to begin with. If we're under 85%, things are okay. If they're over 85%, we need to sit down and talk and implement strategies. Provides sufficient parking to meet employee and longer-term visitor demand. No one was saying that we want to kick the employees out of downtown, but people were saying, "We need to provide adequate, secure, safe, and convenient options. It just may not be on-street if we exceed the 85% threshold." And then, encourage shared parking areas where parking is underutilized. We found that in the off-street supply, there are 891 empty off-street parking spaces in the downtown and on the bluff at the peak hour on a typical day. That is the equivalent of three 300-stall garages that are out there sitting empty every day. We just need to capture it, but that's where we need our partners in the private sector to help us, because most of that, about 80% of that parking, is owned by the private sector. Major findings: 41% of all on-street parking in the historic downtown is designated for all-day permit parking for employees. So, of your on-street parking system, 160 of the 392 stalls that you have is in employee parking. But right now, we know, in the near term, we just have this deficit of 20 stalls exactly where we want it. So, that may be a beginning point. In the node of highest occupancy, that's what I just reiterated, that 34%. So, 78 of the 160 employees who are parking on the street are parking right in the node of highest occupancy, right where our customer demand is the highest.
On this particular point, you're talking about whether it's privately or publicly-owned space?
No, this is just the on-street space, so this is all publicly-owned.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So, parking occupancy in the node of highest occupancy, so see bullet point two, is basically 90% occupied for about four hours of the day. So, you exceeded the threshold, and you're exceeding it consistently. And so, that would suggest we need to do something, and we have strategies that'll be tied to that, we'll show you. As I said, again, I talked to you about the turnover. You're below what would be considered the minimum standard for what would be considered the type of turnover you need to support a Main Street-like vision. So, it's not that bad. I've worked in cities that have turnover rates of like three. You know, five is good, but remember, five is the minimum. But you are below the minimum, so it suggests we need to start doing something now. The bluff zone on-street parking is only 39% occupied. The bluff was working pretty good. We have strategies, and then we talked to the Neighborhood Association about that we can begin to implement over time. But at 39% occupancy, there's lots of space up there available. We want to make sure, though, and the plan provides for, protection of residential parking on the bluff, and the plan makes provision for that, because that's the number-one priority. If it's zoned R, it should be for residential uses. But again, very underoccupied up there. There's 275 empty off-street stalls in the historic core. So, we have that deficit of 20 stalls in the node, but we have 275 empty stalls scattered about the downtown, but they primarily are in private control. And then, as I said, the 400...there's the empty stalls on the bluff, you can see the breakout between on-street, 472 empty stalls on-street, and 526 off-street. Whoops. I'm sorry. What did I just do?
I don't know.
Help me!
You stepped on the accelerator.
I did, didn't I? I'm sorry. And I'll go back for it.
I don't want to do that, Rick.
I'm the only person who's ever done that. That makes me feel really bad. Okay, we're right here. Now, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner West?
I was just going to comment, like you were saying, on the bluff area, and that residential should have the top priority, but I'm just thinking of all those old houses down there, which I live in, too. They have...were built for what kind? Model T cars?
Right.
So, you have very little driveways, very little...you don't have the same kind of suburban setup for parking as you do.
Right.
But I'm sure this is...you know what I mean? You can't park three cars off the street.
Absolutely. Right, because I can't even get my car in my garage, where I live. I have an older home, too.
Yeah, I can't either. But so I'm sure...
Does that have anything to do with anything inside the garage, or are you talking about something else?
But so noted. On the bluff, what...the basic answer to your question is, the guiding philosophy says that if an area is zoned commercial, then the on-street system should be prioritized to the commercial user, and then, under this plan, the commercial priority is the short-term parker. If an area is zoned R, then the on-street system should be prioritized to the residents and guests of the adjacent use, which is residential. So, then, therefore, commercial uses in an R-zone would be by permit, or you could time-stay things, so that if I'm a resident, I have a permit that allows me to park all day, but the time stay is two hours. And so, that controls the commercial use in an R-zone. So, the parking is really quote-unquote "zone-based," and the priorities then are established from that point, both on the bluff and in the downtown. What that would say, real quick as a tangent, if we build residential downtown, which is zoned commercial, then we would not be issuing residential parking permits on-street downtown.
I don't know.
That's the logic, which means we might need minimum parking ratios for residential uses in the commercial core. So, points of majority agreement, and we're saying majority agreement, make decisions about strategy implementation using the 85% rule. People really could get their minds around if, let's get together at 85%, which means the problem is starting, rather than waiting until it's 90 or 100%, and then have to catch up and make decisions in haste, rather than decisions based on good planning. Increase on-street turnover to a level that supports downtown vision. Everybody agrees that we need to support the downtown vision to bring additional businesses in, while balancing the needs of existing businesses. We did have agreement on the statement that too many employees are parking on-street in the historic downtown. We did not have perfect agreement on how we fix that. The people agreed, over time, we have to address that. And then, create partnerships to capture off-street supply that is already built, all those empty parking spaces that are sitting empty now. And the great thing is, we had private sector people on the committee who, I think, want to get involved with going out and talking to their peers about, "Let's try to do something good for downtown," and use the data that we have. So, the near-term recommendations, and again, as you saw from the report, there's a lot more recommendations of this. I'm trying to hit the high points, so they're not all on here. Designate a parking manager for the downtown bluff parking management plan. We already got good parking people in Oregon City. We just need to consolidate it and designate it. Code enforcement is doing a good job, but when you think about downtown parking, you should be thinking about the parking manager, not the code enforcement manager.
Commissioner West?
So, are you suggesting adding another staff person of some sort, or would...how are you seeing this configured?
I'll give you a recommendation on it.
Oh, okay.
Establish a parking advisory committee. We would love to see the committee that has worked so hard on this continue, and serve as an advisory group, and a sounding board, and a negotiating platform for the parking manager. Now, here's an interesting one, and this is an important one, because for people that have real concerns about this plan, particularly in off-street parking, we've identified on-street in the historic core, areas that are currently no parking, where you could add back 56 parking stalls. We want to check that with the city traffic manager, but we could add 56 stalls to your supply without building a single stall. And at $30,000 a stall to build a parking space these days, that's a $1.5 million investment you can make with a can of paint. So...
Commissioner West?
Well, so, what's an example of where this on-street...
Most...yeah, most of it is...
What is it? I mean, what's an example of it?
Most of it is located in the northeast sector of the downtown. And Larry, the report has a whole chapter where we actually show pictures and designate the block faces. Most of it's in the northeast sector. So, we can add 56 stalls of parking outside of...most of it outside of the node of highest occupancy, but in the core. Then, transition a minimum...first step, transition a minimum of 20 existing employee permits now parking in the high occupancy node to the north end of downtown. We're not saying, "Go wholesale and take all those employees out of downtown." That's an ongoing process that the 85% rule would have us do. But right now, there are employee permits, blue and green permits, that are...that could simply be a blue or a green permit down in the 56 stalls that we're creating. And that would free up then 20 stalls in the downtown right where you need them. And then, if the 85% rule fills them back up, we need to transition more down. We can create...we can allow people to park on-street still, it's just not necessarily where they're currently parking. Increase parking rates in area lots that exceed the 85% occupancy. There's certain lots where, although I think Nancy has begun to address it, where we had waiting lists, and so, there already has been some rate changes. But as a standard is, we should have lots that are more expensive, because they're high-demand lots, and we should have some lots that are less expensive, because they're low-demand lots, and begin to create some diversity. There were some sort of flat rating that was going on, regardless of the city lot, it was the same rate. And your people have worked on that, and they're doing a good job, but that should be emphasized over time. So, if it's a really premier spot, and it's 100% occupied, it should be way more expensive than someplace that's empty, particularly if it's empty and outside the core, and we can get an employee down there and open up parking for customers. Begin work with the county courthouse and county corrections to develop an action plan to transition existing on-street reserve stalls to non-core locations. We met with the county commission. We put that on the table. I think the county commission was amenable to that. And what we're saying now is that the action plan needs to be developed. We're not saying that it's a wholesale change at this time, but I think we would say, from the parking consultant's point of view, that to achieve the vision, you need to get employees out of the on-street system. And I think that's just an end goal for the plan. But I think the 85% rule will allow you to take it there in increments that are less Mid- and long-term recommendations: Develop a lighting and pedestrian walkway plan for downtown, not specifically parking-related, but people were concerned about walking. And so, therefore, we need to correlate that concern with an assurance and a confidence level of we, as managers, that it is safe, walkable, and lit, and well-lit. Develop a residential parking permit zone policy. You've got some of that now, but we're talking to refine it, so that if we experience constraints on the bluff, and we start getting into conflicts, that we have the policy and plan already in place that a neighborhood association could avail itself of, to protect itself from spillover. We strive all on-street parking in the historic downtown to better identify parking availability. A lot of spaces in the downtown, you don't really know if you can or can't park there. And so, it's just simply flagging your system, and that simple and intuitive part is what it's really trying to address. Negotiate shared use lease agreements. We have now occupancies in the peak hour of every off-street lot in your downtown. The parking manager with the parking advisory committee can take that data to individual owners and say, "Look, you're sitting on X number of stalls. Can we work with you to capture half of them? You might make some money on it. Maybe we can split some permits here for you." So, that's a key piece to this. If we don't capture that unused space, eventually, we have to build it. So, that's important. Evaluate and adjust minimum parking ratios. What we learned is that some of your existing requirements for parking exceed your actual demand for parking. And there's a section in the report about that. It's about what's required demand versus your true demand. And your true demand is about 1.6 stalls per 1,000 square feet of development, of mixed-use development. You're currently have...in some instances, you have minimums that require more than that. And that's also a detriment and a sort of a disincentive to develop, if you're required to build more parking than you actually need. Lease acquire strategically-located land parcel on the bluff. Long-term, there's the opportunity to put people on the bluff. And again, we need to work with the Neighborhood Association, and we need to work with the connections with the elevator, and possibly with the shuttle. But there's an opportunity up there to put a public lot that would allow employees to park at a very low rate on the bluff. And it'd also be a more efficient and cost-effective use of public monies, because at some point, you want to avoid having to get into a very, very expensive garage. With that...
Let me have Rick address a couple of issues, because one of the things that you hear often is...has to do with, are we too strict on our parking enforcement? And again, if you're making a tiered level of parking fees, if you don't have good enforcement, it'll break down. So, if you could just kind of comment on where you think we're at in terms of parking enforcement, both in the core and then on the bluff, would be...
From our observations, your enforcement is actually very appropriate. What we found is, there are standards in the industry that says, if you have a violation rate that exceeds 9% of the users in your supply, you're not enforcing enough, and your system is being abused. If you're down to zero, you're probably over-enforcing. Well, in your downtown, you're right at about 7%. So, about 7% of the people using your system are violating the signed time stay. So, that says that, from an industry standard, you're actually doing a pretty good job. What could be the problem, though, as we said, is that you've got 11 different parking What could be the problem, though, as we said, is that you've got 11 different parking types. So you've got 15-minute stalls, 30-minute stalls, 1-hour stalls, 2-hour stalls, 4-hour stalls, 8-hour stalls, permit stalls, reserved for the county, et cetera. So if we can flatten the system out, and put the system at that, some time-stay longer than the average stay, the number of tickets should go down. Now, on the bluff, because it's so underutilized, the enforcement is, seems to be fine. We found that the violation rate up there was in the double digits. But it doesn't really matter, because you're not, another reason to enforce is to assure that you're not adversely affecting someone else's ability to use the system. Well, no one is being adversely affected by some of the abuse on the bluff today. That's why the 85 percent rule says that you would begin to target more enforcement on the bluff, when you started to see those constraints occur.
A second question comes up frequently, too, is, and a lot of folks have thought this was a great economic development strategy, is just build a parking garage. So if you could just kind of comment on that issue would be helpful. Well, I mean, I got a couple others now.
Unless you have a whole bunch of money, front money, it's going to be difficult for a city like Oregon City to build a garage. Believe it or not, and I know this was hard for the group to understand, you need a parking problem to get a garage. You need to be able to create the economic environment that would allow a garage to be built. Current financing of a garage would require parking rates of about $170 to $220 per stall per month, to simply pencil a garage. That's to break even. Your current monthly rates are in the range of $30 to $50 a month. So that says either you have significant public subsidies, and some cities have done that. I've worked with cities like Bend, Oregon, that took all their urban, they took $16 million of urban renewal money and front-ended a garage with no debt service.
That was after I left. That was after...
Oh!
Larry always tells me, never tell that story. I can't be responsible for those who follow.
So I think in Oregon City's future, there could be a garage. One of the things that could, should be explored first is, are these public-private partnerships? Is the city could put land on the table, or the city could take future reserves that are being derived from parking revenue that you have, and put it as a contribution to a private development. I think that's the first direction to go to. The next direction to go to is to create the environment for which a garage can be financially successful, which is the 85 percent rule, getting people where they need to be, and then working, over time, the rates will come up, and you'd have to have a rate system that could be conducive to that.
And the final is kind of a comment that I'll lay on table and let Rick kind of respond to this, but I think if you look at all the data we have, in its entirety, is, we do not have a parking issue in terms of supply. What we have is a parking issue in terms of where it's located. And addressing that means, again, going back to the priority customer, it comes down to a simple question of who walks. And when you see those recommendations about how to make that more convenient, it does tie in to future issues of perhaps a shuttle service, and also longer hours for the elevator.
Yes, and that's in the plan. So real quickly to address that, the issue now is, there's 897 empty stalls in your downtown and the bluff. That's why you can't build a parking garage. If you build a parking garage today and had to charge rates in it, everybody would park in the empty parking stalls. So we got to deal with that. So that's the first thing, as Larry is right. The issue of who walks is very important. It goes back to your main street vision and what you want to do with your downtown. Anytime an employee is parking, and I know there's some employees here that are going to throw darts at the back of my head, but if you look at it within the context of the guiding principles, anytime an employee is parked in the downtown, in an area that exceeds 85 percent occupancy, some customer is walking to their destination, from a distance further than that employee would walk, who's there every day, who has the benefit of knowing the downtown, who has the benefit of, we can give you a permit and assure you a stall. So it is, it's simply that, it's who walks, and you do in your node, in the high occupancy node right now, I assume, and the data suggests that that is actually occurring, the customers are walking farther than employees. Again, that's one of those conflict points and tough decisions to make.
Okay, these recommendations actually are up for us to consider adopting this evening. So, questions? Commissioner Neely?
I think you might have talked about two surveys, I'm not sure. You were talking about the nine-hour survey, was that only conducted on one day?
No, each day. I'm sorry, Commissioner, what I suggested was, the reason we did the two survey days is we wanted to see if there was any significant impact on the parking supply, pre-shut, pre-trolley, post-trolley.
Right.
And what we did is, we found out, no, that didn't occur. And so we took, I think it was the pre-trolley day, we took the highest day of occupancy of the two days, and used that as the single sample.
Now, I noticed, and I believe I'm correct, that those, both of those days were on Thursdays. Is that right? This, we're not to infer from this anything but what's presented here. That is, I presume, different days in the week, just because of court operations or something else, that those could vary, and you only look at Thursdays.
Correct. And what the plan calls for is that, what we've done is, we've established a baseline for you. Because you can't survey every day, so what we recommend to cities is, you now have a baseline, and we would say that you could theoretically assume that it could vary 5 to 10 percent. So any numbers you see, so the constraints could get worse, but if you look at the total amount of empty parking, you'd take 80 stalls out of the supply. So what we would say is, the next time, within two years, the plan calls for another survey, and then we would say, do it on a Wednesday. And then, two years later, do it on a Tuesday. So your point is very well taken, but we believe because of the amount of unused space in the system, that this two-year, the existing strategies are accurate, and the variation would probably be not significant.
When you were talking about marked stalls, I was particularly surprised about the number you were quoting up in the bluff, Seventh Street area. Are those actually stalls all marked?
No.
Okay.
What we had to do is, we actually took a wheel.
Okay.
And we actually took block faces where parking was allowed, and so prior to the study, we went and estimated every one of those block faces.
Because if it's not marked, I presume you really don't have too much control of how the cars distribute themselves throughout there.
Correct.
I thought that was the case. Another question, and I assume you didn't address, I'd be curious at some point or another, what percentage of the elevator users are using it to get out of Oregon City versus those that are in fact, the purpose is to utilize the downtown area? And I don't know if we have any idea what that is.
No, and one of the committee members, former city councillor...
David Mayby.
Yeah, right after the study had begun, David said, "You know, you should put one of your surveyors in the elevator." So that's, your point's really well taken, and I think survey, that second survey, while we have our, whoever is hired, while the surveyors are out, that one issue would be to be doing data collection right in the elevator, so we can answer that question.
I might make a comment. A few years back, we would have our elevator usage given to us for every single year, from some particular year it was used. Of course, you had so many lines, you couldn't even read the graphs anymore.
Right.
But what was happening up until about, I think, five or six years ago, the usage was dropping, year by year by year. Now, our use is greater than the average of the previous years, which means there's been a dramatic, which I infer, means there's been a dramatic increase in the use of the elevator. For whatever reason, I don't know, but...
I would concur with you, and again, we can't address it, but we do believe that that would be an add-on to the next parking survey.
More questions? My phone and mailbox and face-to-face contacts are certainly coming from the courthouse, and so I am really eager for us to begin, as you say here, the recommendation, to develop an action plan for transition, because they, we've gotten the notice of the courthouse that change is underway.
Again, the only response I have to that, Mayor, is that if we can hold true to the guiding principles, which is that we need to have a plan that implements the 85 percent rule, and transitions employees to other areas of the downtown, it's not to take parking away, but to transition to other areas of the downtown, find a balance of that which is truly public safety, then begin the transition. It'll result in a lot more parking for customers.
Let me add, too, part of that discussion that we had is a question, first of all, that downtown parking is not free, there's a cost to all of it. So one of the questions is, who pays? And I think it really comes down to all users kind of carry some of that burden, and so it's a question of how we distribute that. I think before you adopt recommendations this evening, I think there's still some additional process we have to do, because there's a lot of misconception, too. It seemed like the term was supposed at the courthouse. I think part of what has been said is that we don't appreciate the courthouse or those users, and nowhere in this study has that statement been made. There has been this question of priority use, and how do we handle that, which has not been defined as of yet. Needless to say, if we increase fees, which is one of the recommendations here, and we're not managing parking on the bluff, you're going to have a lot of folks use that, which is going to create another issue, and plus, your revenues will drop, and your ability to fund what we're trying to do is going to become more problematic. Definitely have to figure out how we're going to address employee parking, and if it's out of the core, how do you handle that? Is it, everyone walks? Do we look at some other type of process? How do you make it? Because there's this feeling of safety, particularly after it gets dark, we're going to have to address those type of issues. So there's some costs implied in all of this, and it's not something we can get to tomorrow. It's something we're going to have to kind of work on, move through. From a process perspective, I think we need to do a similar presentation as a county, they did pay for part of this study. You may need a joint commission meeting with them to discuss this, because I think this really is going to come down to the policymakers making the call, because if you go and talk to the users, most folks will tell you, they understand that, we heard this in the parking, we understand that, but we were here first. And so you get in to, you know, fix it, but we don't want to be inconvenienced either, and that may or may not, it's going to be very difficult to meet all those agendas.
Commissioner Neely?
It's more of a question, maybe, to the city manager. In terms of the residential use of the bluff area and so forth, even the two-hour parkings, I think there are certain areas where, in fact, a resident can park there for 24 hours, but we don't have a permitting process to do it. I know we have a permitting process down in the downtown area that protects it. And how hard would it be to, say, for a resident to actually get a 24-hour permit that they can put on their car?
I think we have some of that already. I think really, it's a question, we're going to have to really look at the areas where we're going to commit or provide parking for all users and those that are just residential. And then, where you have those conflicts, we're going to have to increase that residential permit parking, but yeah.
Because I think, I think as you know, a lot of the older neighborhoods don't have off-street parking on their houses.
Yeah.
They weren't built that way originally.
Yeah, that's why we have to be careful how we do this, because we don't want to just create a parking problem up in the McLaughlin neighborhood by managing...
We do currently have parking permits that...
Oh, yeah.
In the residential areas?
Yep.
I have a, all our cars have a residential permit, and they get checked, too, by code enforcement. So in other words, you have to move your cars, you can't keep them, like, you know, park a car for five days in the same spot.
Actually, across the city, you can't, you can't park a car on the street more than 24 hours.
Well, no, it depends on the particular street.
Well, I understand the code, but I...
There is, we do have...
But there is a permit you purchase?
It's been limitedly used, but we do have a residential...
Tell me how the permit is. Tell me about the permit only, and where do you buy it, and what does it cost?
You don't buy it.
You know, I'll have to get you an answer on exactly how that works. You know, I'm not the nuts and bolts guy.
I think they've come out simply, in our area, simply because it's been an issue. I mean, that's why the McLaughlin, especially in your area.
Yes, and we have two, yeah, we have two-hour parking for visitors. So we all, the residents, have applied. You talk to Nancy Bush, and you get a sticker, you give your cars, you know, your license plate, and then when your expiration on your tags, and you renew it every year.
But is it no cost?
No cost, no cost, but it's a matter that you do it.
Okay, I just know that.
And you have, I have my sticker posted where they see it.
Yeah, the plan simply calls it, we think that, when the group looked at it, there's some refinements that could make it better, and also more responsive, if, in case we, you know, quickly, we start having a problem.
And just to be certain, I'm sure I'm right, but when we're talking about the recommendations, we're actually talking, in terms of the executive settlement, at least, I think it's the...
14 and 15.
14 and 15, yes.
Okay. Were you recommending that we hold this over while we do some of that presentational, in case we want to refine some of the recommendations? I mean, the recommendations here are as they are. When we adopt implementation, wouldn't that be separate?
Could be, yep.
Or are you thinking that, I mean, yeah, to adopt these might excite the...
It's what you feel comfortable with.
Courthouse.
I think, probably need the conversation with the county, they did fund part of the study.
That's what I'm just wondering.
Again, it's something that you're going to begin to see in your budget sessions next week. So again, if this is something that you're seeing that gives you a lot of heartburn, we probably need to chat about that. And I won't guarantee that all parties, when they get together, will agree on everything, but I think, again, and mostly, especially those short-term, are, I think, you know, I don't think you have a lot of options here if you're going to try to address the goals of what we're trying to do, but you want to make sure all parties are, they don't feel like you've got out ahead of them, I think.
Yes, and that would be my recommendation, because I think to adopt these while there are disturbance in the force field, yeah, would act as if we were...
And I can't guarantee we're going to be able to solve all those issues.
No, but I think the negotiations need to occur within the context of what you've presented. Commissioner Neely?
The impact of neighborhood associations, McLaughlin, have, has the, I know you've had representatives in your group, but has the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association per se seen these recommendations?
Yes, we, well, I'll say that, we did have a meeting with the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. I think beyond the folks who had been attending the meeting, we had four additional folks show up for that meeting. So we made the effort, you know, we could go back again, again, I don't want to monopolize Rick's time, but it was a light turnout. It was, you had about 18 people there, I think, out of the 18, you probably had 14. At some time or fashion, had tied in to most of our meetings, so...
Okay. Are there further questions, so then we'll hold this over for further work? Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay? Yes. We will have a five-minute recess. Thank you. Is item 7M, which is the city commission goals and objectives for 2009. We've been discussing this since our retreat in January, and they may be in a format in which to adopt. These, where's our current ones? The current ones are behind, are straight ahead of us on the wall, and provide the guideline for staff to do the work. So these are actually very, very important. We've discussed them on multiple occasions, and I'm looking for them, actually, oh, they're back of the agenda, that's why. Okay. Goal number one is to build a sustainable future. Goal number two is slightly different than the current one, implement economic development strategy and maintain an environment for economic success, meaning jobs are very, very important in this environment, which is why the little tweak. Number three is the same, address critical facility needs, it's almost the same. Number four is enhance the livability of our community, that's different, because as we grow and change, that has, I think, become a higher priority for us, and we want more visibility on that. Number five, increase communications with citizens and facilitate citizen participation, that's a little bit different. And then number six is, I think, only prudent in this economic time, maintain fiscal health and long-term financial stability. So after our work session where we discussed these, I took these home and did the red line of the discussion, so that's what you have first. And then, secondly, you have the final copy, so hopefully you check to see if we captured all that each of you wished to capture. And then you have at your places the other piece, the city priorities for 2009. So, and those are not, those are not prioritized from, yeah, in order of priority, so number one isn't the number one, what they are are columnized. So each on the left are the top priorities, in the middle are others that are as yet with undesignedated funding, with uncertain timing, and then the new initiatives, or initiatives that haven't yet been putting into the funding mix are on the third column to the right. So do you have changes, or you have a comment?
Madam Mayor, as a word of explanation, too, because the goal statements are always broad and mean a lot of things to a lot of different folks, and these will be on the website as well, once you approve those. For folks really kind of looking for what we are attempting to do in the next few months, they might want to look at those and look at the objectives under each one, which gives a little bit more clarity to kind of how we're trying to address those goals coming here. And again, as time goes by, if the goals remain the same, we'll continue to add efforts to those.
And the work plan will go, you know, something like this. So under "build a sustainable future," we have one of the things to explore program to reuse tri-city treatment gray water, for instance. So if it says explore or consider, that's then an opportunity for staff and us to sit down in a work session setting and discover the parameters that we wish to look at in that, and then it gets fleshed out. So a lot of these are things to, some of them are things with direct implementation, and then others are to... and then others are to discuss development of certain pieces. So are there changes that any of you wish to make before we go? Commissioner West.
Well, I have quite a few comments tonight. Whoops, sorry. Under our, interesting, we're talking about this first thing, under build a sustainable, yeah.
Number one?
Under goal number one on the sustainable, I would prefer that, since it's not just up to Oregon City what we wanna do with gray water, I would prefer that to say explore program with our other community partners or members of agency, members of tri-cities to reuse the tri, because that's something we will not be able to do in and of ourselves.
Do you think it's understood, or do you need to say that?
Well, it's a, huh?
Since the facility is within the city of Oregon City. We get the gray water.
That's my point. My purpose is we get the gray water.
I guess I think if we produce the waste, we get to use it.
Yeah, that would be mine too as well.
But Commissioner West raises a good point, and you'll see that at your upcoming work session when we talk about the wastewater partners, because what we've done by super-regionalizing the sewer system is more partners in that, and others see that a little different. So there may be others who have eyes on that.
It might have a cost to it, but.
It's gonna be an interesting political discussion now with a much broader constituency than just your tri-city partners. Now you're looking at the super-region.
Okay. Exactly. But I don't see any movement to change the wording necessarily, because it'll come back to us as a.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Well, I'm, that's fine. I just brought it up then. Okay, goal number two, under number two, the complete development agreements that meet the city commission, Urban Renewal Commission, and have, and community approval. I would like, what constitutes community approval is my question. So I would like it to say that have gone through a stakeholder or community process, and at least have been vetted thoroughly. I don't know what community approval means.
Your suggested wording?
Well, that have completed or, you know, gone through a full community process.
But what constitutes a community process?
Well, usually every development, or every development, or every, what is the word? Every project has a process. Okay, just a sticking point, fine.
Commissioner?
A good point, Jim.
No.
I don't know who else to say it, so it's just a.
I think, I think we won't move forward without community acceptance. So I guess in my mind, community accept, I changed the word to maybe acceptance, because that's, I think, the outcome of a community of process within the community, that that's how, you know, for instance, if you take Cove Project, I mean, it has changed and evolved with each community contact point.
Right.
So that is how I think community consensus is gained. So you wanna just change the words a little bit?
Yeah, acceptance, I think.
Acceptance?
Yeah, it does sound better.
Okay.
Fine. I'm just bringing, okay. And then on number five, when we turn the page there, still under goal two, and we're starting to talk about efforts to develop and support tourism product promotion in organizations, I thought two things could be added there.
Where are you getting, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, on page eight, or page two, whatever you want.
Still goal two.
Still goal two. When we talk about continuing efforts to develop and support, you know, our tourism product, we list many things which are all good, and those I agree with, and, but I thought we maybe needed to add on here, because Main Street, a component of Main Street has tourism, so that maybe in this spot, we would add Main Street rep to Oregon City Tourism Council. That could be one E. And then F could be to integrate Main Street's tourism plan into the Oregon City Tourism Council's priorities for TAP funding. So that should be also, or Main Street should be part of the bigger plan on tourism for the community.
That however is, those are both products of the Tourism Council, which we don't directly control.
Well, we don't control the Stevens Crawford and.
Well, that's support efforts to do those. That's, that does imply that we are creating actions. I support both of those things you're saying.
Well, and promote, you're supporting the organizations and the tourism product, and that's just, since this is a new organization from last year, and I'd like to see their efforts integrated into the bigger picture.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, actually. We're talking about support.
Just adding an E and F, it's not a.
I think I'd like to say support Main Street, support integration of Main Street efforts in tourism.
You could combine it.
Committees or something, tourism, in tourism planning. What about that?
Into tourism.
Because that's what the TAP is, and that's what the Oregon City Tourism Council does. Wanna do that?
All right.
So integrate Main Street.
Integrate Main Street.
Into tourism.
Oregon City.
Planning and development.
Yeah, tourism planning. Okay, there you go, that maybe was too specific. Under the, then I'm gonna skip a goal three that I thought was perfect, and goal four.
A perfect goal, I like it.
Is when we were talking about the livability of our community, so just under discussing issues related to population growth, increase police staffing beyond fire annexation plan. Well, I'd like to tell, somebody to tell me how I'm gonna do that, and what taxes I'm gonna raise to do that. That wording's too strong for me. I'd like it to say explore financing options to increase police staffing, because I don't know that we've decided on any way that we're, other than applying for some cops grants, how we're, how we're going to do that at this point.
I have a suggested word change for that.
Okay.
I remember back during the campaign, a couple of folks, Rocky among them, had mentioned that there's actually national standards on a per-population level of police staffing. And I'm wondering if we can just change the language to increase police staffing to meet national standards.
Well, budgetarily, I mean, you know, it is a goal, there's national standards, state standards, and we aren't at it, and I don't know how we're going to be able to do that financially. We, when we agreed to annex to the fire, we said no new taxes, and.
Well, I think the cops actually, when we explore.
The cops will help, I mean, I'm.
Well, that actually gets us beyond, that actually does this. So.
No.
It does, it doesn't take us beyond the fire annexation plan and police staffing.
But it doesn't take us beyond those national standards.
Right, yeah, no, 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 it's the fire annexation plan here, the national standards is another, as an add-on here. Comments? Yes, Commissioner Neely?
Yeah. I think, I don't know how I say this. There are national, state standards for many things, including a library facility and so forth. The reality of probably almost any community, maybe Lake Oswego might be in session, or Clackamas County, but it's really beyond the financial capability, I think, of meeting those standards. Oftentimes, there's standards that are set by the professionals in those areas themselves, and that's not to criticize it, but oftentimes, I think you're just in a position where you start writing them as your, as your goal, you may not realistically ever be able to reach them. And I just make that as a comment.
Yeah, I think we have a good example of that in our Parks Department.
Oh, yes.
We funded our Parks for national standards, we've been funded to Michelle.
So how can we re-say that?
Um, well, you could, we could say increase police staffing toward national standards and beyond fire annexation plan, and then that gives us a target.
What we're working on, if you really want to target that, you could say pursue cops grant funding for five officers.
That's more realistic, but it's what we're doing.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And that's in addition to the additions in the fire annexation plan, so.
These are our current goals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pursue cops grant.
Funding for five additional officers.
It's five officers that we're getting, maybe going to be able to get with the two?
That's what we've applied for. Now, again, we may or may not get five, and then I think there's maybe another round of funding the following year. Now, in addition to that, in the annexation plan, the five-year annexation plan, you had the addition of four officers on top of that. And what we will talk about, we are adding on top of those four, a half officer, because we're gonna fund the school resource. And we're still talking about perhaps a Tri-Met officer.
Right, we're waiting to see how our current staffing levels are after our current hiring batch. We're hiring one right now, and we hope to hire another one for a Tri-Met position, and Tri-Met pays for 118% of that position, which would be a good addition to us because of the high number of people who use the transit system throughout the city. We did submit our application for the five cops positions, the cops grant yesterday, that was due yesterday. We asked for five. My understanding from talking to Senator Wyden's office the other day is that maybe 100 officers will be allocated for Oregon, and I've heard but have not confirmed that Portland has asked for 20. So how they distribute those throughout the state, at this point, I don't know, but I would anticipate probably getting at least two or three of those from the ones we applied for.
It'll be competitive, but again, appreciate you getting that grant in. Commissioner Smith?
I have some of the same feelings about the wording in terms of national standards as Commissioner Neely does, and I'm not really too interested in changing the main focus of that line, but maybe the police chief could help us with some wording that he feels comfortable with?
Yeah.
Okay, so right now, we have increased police staffing beyond fire annexation plan. We're okay with that? And then the second line is pursue cops grant funding for five additional officers? Do you just want something beyond that?
Well, I just wanna make sure that the police chief is comfortable with this goal, because.
Okay.
I actually am comfortable with that, with the addition of the five officers through the cops grants, and the addition of the extra officers through the fire annexation over the next few years. That could give us, I believe, a total up to nine officers hired, which would be quite significant.
Very significant. That would be amazing.
You know, one thing we have talked about, I'm glad Daphne has come forward here, because one thing we have talked about, but it isn't explicitly expressed in the goals, and that is one of those officers being another school resource officer. Now, if that is actually, if that's a desire among the five of us, I think we ought to put that in here.
Yeah, I agree.
Let's do. So another subset of the police staffing then would be?
Be fund the school resource officer.
An additional, an additional.
And additional.
Talking about a second one.
Right.
A second.
Yes.
Second SRO?
Out of the additions we're talking about, or on top of the addition.
It's inclusive. That is, it is, among any additions that we get, it's a high priority that one of them be the second school resource officer.
This is what I have, that A, or that, yeah, A is still increase police staffing, and then the two subsets under that, we have the cops funding and the additional SRO. So it's all an increased, it's all about the funding.
Yep.
Okay? Next, you have.
Mayor Norris?
Yes?
If I could add a comment.
Sure, please.
Obviously, when we increase the staffing levels significantly, we again circle back to the issue of the police facility. And, and somewhere down the road, excuse me, we need to address having a efficient, professional facility that can house these extra officers and the current officers we have. And I recently toured a few newer facilities, and at some point in the future, I'd like to have maybe the commission join me in one of those tours and get an idea of what a community of our size, a newer police department, looks like, and how much more efficient they are. And I think it might be a good idea to set that somewhere down the road.
And we have, we have medication for depression after you do that, too.
Well, it's like every time I go to a city hall.
Let me indicate, in goal three.
Yeah, that's.
Number two B, as I think you get at that, because in the strategic plan, if I'm correct, is it talks about a police facility, and that's one thing you wanted to add, so we'd look at that, and.
Yeah, that's what I.
Once we kinda get the study done on things, we'll be talking to you about that. But I would echo, I think it would be advantageous for the commission if we could set up a field trip to kinda tour a couple of the police facilities around.
Good to see.
I think it will be eye-opening. It is shocking just to see where we're at, but it always has been.
Every facility.
We've toured one.
I think when we take that tour, you wanna do that tour again, and then you'll see what it's supposed to look like.
Multiple times.
Okay, Commissioner West, continue.
Under, okay, so still goal four, Nancy, number two on updating plans, is the city CIP, is that like the, is it just the transportation? Is it what?
It's all.
Oh, the entire, okay.
Utilities.
And number four, under there, develop additional partnerships with Oregon City School District to assist them during economic hardship. I'm, I'm struggling with that one, too, because you know, the community college has a big slash in their budget, and how am I gonna support my community college? And I'm, you know, there's so many organizations in Oregon City, I don't know if that their financial burden should be on our plate. I'm certainly willing to have all kinds of, you know, partnerships to try to solve problems, but I just don't like the wording on that, and I, sorry, I didn't offer any better wording tonight.
Well, I'm gonna suggest, I'm gonna, I think I brought this up.
This is yours.
Well, I know, I know Jim, Jim's brought this up in a specific realm, but I have too in terms of recreational facilities, and I don't know if our master plan still refers, I can't remem, I think it still refers to those kinds of partnerships, doesn't it? I know the old one did, partnership between the city of Oregon City and the, and the Oregon City High School in terms of recreational facilities. Does our current master plan address that?
The master plan does it.
Yes.
Doesn't necessarily mean that we have that formal agreement.
No, 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 I understand that.
Yes, that's correct.
Let me suggest, because we don't really have a partnership, though. We just have in our master plan.
What about explore?
Develop additional partnerships with Oregon City to provide.
What about just the word explore instead of develop?
Well, the thing, the thing is, the thing is, I would look at whatever we do as potentially a longer-term partnership in certain areas that go beyond our economic hardships.
Yes.
And how we phrase that to.
We did have that last year, now that you mentioned that, Doug, and it was probably with facilities.
And parks.
Programming, and.
Yeah.
Didn't we?
Well, we've talked about it a lot. What about if we just love to explore additional partnerships with the Oregon City School District?
Period.
Period, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And then I am so supportive of trying to figure out how to fund arts, but number five there, establish percent for art program. You know, since when do we establish taxes without some kind of community process? We didn't do a pavement maintenance utility fee without going through a process, we didn't raise water rates or sewer rates, so, so I wanted to, I'm asking you guys here, if we could put that down under number six, where we talk about maintaining fiscal health and long-term financial stability, and then put it as explore feasibility options with community for financing public art. I would love to find a way to do it, but I'm not sure it's, you have it under livability, I think it's a financing issue before we can get to the livability. It's just a technical thing.
Maybe could be. The history of this is that the Arts Commission, one of the big things it did besides the public art policy was to vet the percent for art program, which the county also has. It's not been shopped, but we actually have the ordinance written, and it's been cleared through the attorneys, so this could be the beginning of shopping it.
Okay.
But it also could go down there. I don't, should rather, to me, it's livability, but it's.
Well, if you leave it there, could we say then, have it more of exploring feasibility options or whatever? How did you, you know, you know what the process is, and I guess I wasn't aware that we had an ordinance ready to go, but just the same, an ordinance ready to go without a community discussion.
Right. Again, in my mind, anything we do has to go through the appropriate processes, and we don't just like to do it. So in my mind, that implies that, but we could say.
I think, may I suggest that actually, this, this needs a little expansion. It's a percent of what? And I think.
Yeah.
It's, percent for art is an official program, but maybe.
Maybe in the goal, I think I know what it is, but it would not be clear, I think, to anybody else except somebody that knew what that program was. So it is in terms of development fees, isn't, I mean, isn't that where it comes into?
It's a fee on top of public, any public expenditures for a facility.
It's for public buildings, there'd be a percent.
Well, not just, it could be utilities too.
Not private buil?
No, it's just public.
But not utilities funded with system development charges?
No. No, for instance, when we do city hall, if we had this in place, a percent of the cost of the renovation would go to art. And the art doesn't have to be a piece of sculpture sitting out by the front door. The art could be the Downspouse. It could be a mural in the backdrop. It can be expended in a way that a public committee, which is defined in our public art policy, would determine that it is spent.
Right, and it applies to the public development. So that might address some of your concerns about how private development.
Yes, because, I mean, here we are raising all these fees, and, you know, our building permits are down, and we're talking here about we're putting in an art thing for, with no public dialogue.
Yeah, and the Regional Arts and Culture Council in Portland helped us develop it and certainly could, I mean, there would be a process in getting to that, but perhaps we do need a more basic explanation as we explore it. But again, that would be a piece that would be pulled out, fully vetted at a work session, and then, you know, determined implementation. Commissioner Smith, did you have any?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think it's one. It was 1%, right?
Yes.
It can be, no, it could be whatever we decide.
It could be whatever, but I think. Wasn't that the way it was, I thought it was, I think it was actually written that way, 1%.
I think it might have been one with 0.5 for maintenance.
That's the way I remember it, but maybe it's.
I think it might have been 0.5 for maintenance, but I can't remember.
I'm going to suggest, and Alice, you probably, you're a better wordsmith than I am, but to go ahead and put in what it in fact is for public art.
Establish program for funding public art, which is what you were kind of saying.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that all of these, I don't know if this is a Nancy I question, but I'm hoping our goals and our objectives can be on our website. So even the objectives, though, I know that we have goals up there, but that's why, the other reason is for a little bit of clarification, if an average or someone in the community looks at it, they ought to be able to kind of get the gist of it.
You've spent good time on this. Thank you. Thoughtfully done.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I have one more.
Okay.
Goal Two, Five, C.
Okay.
Support efforts to reopen and sustain Museum of the Oregon Territory and the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center and Stephen Crawford House. And then we talked about at the last meeting underneath that, ask CHP to provide comprehensive report to the city commission on the status of facilities, finances, and direction, and then underlined as a prerequisite for a financial assistance. Because of our next topic on the agenda, my question is, is a consultant financial assistance, which it may or may not be depending on, you know.
One's interpretation.
What it's interpreted. But the question is, even if we, if we pass, if we vote tonight to spend $25,000 for a consultant.
Up to.
Up to. That $25,000 assumes that, well, implies that we're going to be spending another $25,000 to create the total 50.
Not necessarily.
Why does it?
Well.
I said, all that needs to be, I think it does not, actually.
Okay, well, in that case, then I think this may need to be.
Want to strike that?
Well, I don't know.
You don't strike it? We could just put a period after direction, and then we're free to do what we wish.
Maybe.
Well, I'm not comfortable with that either.
Okay.
Because that doesn't say, I mean, that could be, we could get a comprehensive report by CHP in five years. That doesn't really make sense.
What happens?
I think, I think instead of, as a prerequisite of the city spending money, or city putting money towards CHP in any form, or, I don't know, I don't, it's too broad. And to me, when it says financial assistance, to me, it would mean any financial assistance, and the consultant to me would be part of that. But that's not necessarily true, because we're not really, we're not really helping the museums by hiring a consultant. We're not helping museums open. So I'm not, I'm not sure how to word it, but.
You know, we get to vote as we desire. I think we could just take that off, and then we wouldn't have to argue over what it meant.
I agree.
You mean, all of one, or as a prerequisite?
I would, I would still put a period after direction.
Yeah, I do, too.
Because we get to vote on any decision we make. So it's, we can determine whether we need to have that information or not. Are you comfortable?
Yeah, I don't, I think, I want to kind of cut off an assumption that I think a lot of people have, that we're making some kind of a guarantee. You know, an evaluation may come to the process that you actually need different governing bodies for different museums, depending on what you are. We don't know what it's going to be. I mean, we have no idea how that's going to shake out. And I think just leaving that out as a prerequisite for financial assistance, because the implication is there that maybe the financial assistance would go to a specific organization. It may, in fact, be something very different.
Yeah, and that may be way too specific for a goal.
Yeah.
Because we do get to flesh these out.
So the wording is?
Is a period after direction.
Okay. If this discussion goes on longer, could you add Goal Seven to resuscitate the city manager?
Sure. Okay, do we have changes? And then our motion for adoption, we don't have additional changes. Let's move this along.
Can I have one more question?
You have a long evening.
Sure. I'm sorry, I really. Goal Number Two again, and at the back of Number Five on, or no, it's Number Six, I'm sorry, initiate program for urban design planning and the contracting for design planning that, or contract for design planning that builds connectivity between projects and gains community consensus and conduct planning. So now, has this got a price tag on it? And what is, what are we accomplishing here that we're?
It's initiative without funding.
Oh, okay.
Currently. I think, again, this would be one, Commissioner Nocita has talked about it multiple times, again, that we bring forward and discuss what it meant and what we would wish to do if we wished to do that. And yes, it will have a price tag.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there a motion for adoption of our 2009 goals as corrected?
I will make an adoption, yeah, I'll make an adoption for setting our 2009 city commission goals on April 15th. I wonder what the date was last year, but.
Later.
First quarter, we've done it.
Oh, is there a second?
Well, there's lots of.
With the amendments.
With amendments, as discussed.
Is there a second?
Second?
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Is there further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
With the reservation that I oppose the Rivers project, aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero with a brief reservation. I'd like to move then quickly to, because we do have a long agenda this evening, to item number seven N, which is the recommendation to hire a consultant for Clackamas Heritage Partners. So I'd like to dive into the background on that, because the, Towards and Development Council of Clackamas County had given a, had agreed to buy the two plans developed by Clackamas, given to Clackamas, the Clackamas Heritage Partners had authorized for $87,000. That was contingent on funding from the city of Oregon City and the amount of $50,000 was suggested. So we put together a task force, which turned out to be the Mayor West, of Mayor West, Commissioner West, wow. I don't know.
Last promotion was plenty.
Commissioner West, all the four, the rest of us were there. And we met with Commissioners Lineiger and Lehan at Clackamas County, along with Linda Bell and two representatives of Clackamas Heritage Partners. The purpose of the meeting was, because the TDC had assumed that, or had predicated that money coming from the city would essentially unlock the funds from TDC, it was essentially my proposal that, because it seemed that it was the only thing that we could get some possible agreement on, that we use city funding up to $25,000, and the money, that figure came about doing some research in the community on what that might cost. And that probably would fund a consultant for five months, so that's probably way longer than we would need it. And that by hiring a consultant, it would be assistance to all of us in multiple ways. It would be a consultant that could look at past studies, that could look at current operations, look at management structure, look at board makeup, look at the long-term strategic plan, the history and audits of the organization. And it seemed to me that the proposal made sense from my point of view in that we weren't funding, we weren't using public funds just to go to an organization that needed subsidy with no guarantee of future, you know, does it do any of us? And so it seemed to me that that, for myself, was a first step, a prerequisite for considering anything beyond that in, from the city. And so at the meeting, that proposal received a good airing, and it, everyone around the table liked the idea of the possible consultant. That that was, for the, as the county expressed it, a long, probably a long-term and necessary step, because they would look favorably upon, for instance, the recommendations of the consultant and look, and, you know, maybe pulling out one to fund, and did not close the door on future, futures subsidies or future gifts to the organization for long-term continuation. The goal, I think, of everyone has been to get the facilities open. So then, subsequent to that meeting, the TDC was to, all of us were meeting, every, all the boards in the room were meeting to discuss those parameters. So I talked with Commissioner Lehan today, and the TDC did not have enough information in which to talk about their funding yet, because the commissioners had quite a discussion, and they likely are going to consider some kind of match, because they believe that challenging the organization, challenging CHP to come up with funding themselves is to, is a position of strength, that strengthens an organization, it's a pulling yourself up by the bootstraps. But yet, because the goal is to not have this hole in our historical fabric, especially for the summertime, when we are on everybody's lists of things to do, that that's the direction in which they're going. So the conclusions that she said, that Commissioner Lehan gave me, that all five of the commissioners want to assist CHP. They want the organization open for the summer, and it's unclear whether that includes past October, and that they need more data to make those decisions. And the data, they would like, they like the idea of the data coming through an outside consultant who would be a professional that knows how to look at nonprofit organizations and, you know, has probably done that in the past and looked at long-term health. So what we have, and since the four of you were there, you'll feel free to comment if I haven't characterized the meeting as you, as you think it went. So before us, we have a recommendation that is to use, to offer to hire and pay a consultant, I guess up to $25,000, because we, again, haven't had an RFP or any of that kind of thing, that would give us recommendations on changes the organization might need to make, the health of the organization, just a package of recommendations, like the parking study, to give us guidance on how we can assist. I mean, it's facilities on public property, it's very clear that, I don't, I don't think we want to run them, and this does buy some time. So other comments, I guess I'll put that on the floor as a, I guess as a motion, because it, or a starting point for discussion. Commissioner Smith?
There, it didn't seem to me that everyone was all on the same page in support of spending money on a consultant. Perhaps it's the one.
I think that confirmed that in their meeting.
Well, I was there and.
The meeting they had Tuesday.
Well, you were saying.
Oh, yes, yes.
At the meeting we were all at.
Yes, yes, sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
And so I think that that's not necessarily true. I'm surprised that I have at least found one thing that I probably agree completely with CHP on, is the fact that spending money on a consultant is not probably going to help. And CHP even made comments about consultants that have been hired in the past, and that really hasn't, you know, taken the, well, it hasn't taken the CHP further, helped a lot. I have concerns about the whole concept of hiring a consultant, partly because I think most of us know what the issues are. I'm not completely against hiring a consultant, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's our, I don't think the city itself should be spending money on this. I really think that the county should be paying part of this if we go through with a consultant, or even CHP itself. CHP has money to hire a consultant. I think the key to the success of future of these museums is to fix whatever problem's wrong. And I think the own, I think the entity that really has to look at that is CHP itself. I would feel much more comfortable tonight if we were giving $20,000, $25,000 to help open the museums, but that's not what we're doing. So it, you know, this doesn't really.
We can do that, too.
Well, I'm saying, it, that makes more sense. But, but there's going to be strings to that, too. I have to use, Mayor, I have to use your comment earlier today about supporting something in the middle of a disturbance in the force field. Well, there's a huge disturbance in the force field, and I think there's a lot of things that need to be addressed. I, you know, the museums need to be open for the summer, absolutely. But this $25,000 to hire a consultant, I just don't see it. I don't see the purpose of it. Also, even aside from my just gut feeling about it, we have no idea what this consultant's being hired to look at.
We said, who had said that?
We have no idea what happens when this consultant comes back and how the CHP deals with that result. The city commission has no control over what the CHP decides. If the consultant comes back and says, these are the problems, the CHP doesn't have to fix those problems. I mean, that's their decision. So, you know, then we're spending money for something we don't necessarily know is going to find out what the real problems are, or even if it does, if those problems are going to be addressed. And so in that sense, you know, I don't know that it really overall helps the future of the CHP. And it, I have other issues as a business owner that pays a business license fee, and I know I'm not the only one sitting up here that pays a business license fee. I have a business license where I am the sole employee, and I'm thinking, okay, well, if this is where my business license money going, is going towards, then maybe it didn't need to be such a large sum of money that I was paying. Because I don't see the connection. And I really don't see how, you know, even if I supported the consultant idea, and even if I supported all the sort of things, I don't see why that is the fund of money where it comes from, and I don't, I don't see the connection there at all. So anyway, I think that I won't be able to support this.
Okay, if, I didn't see that I had three votes for $25,000.
I didn't see that I had three votes for a $25,000 matching grant, for instance. So let me, I would be happy with that, but I didn't see three votes for it. And the only wedge we have is what, and I'm hearing you all say that you want to control over the future, the only wedge we had was funding. And so it seemed to me that a consultant's recommendations, which would look at data that I think we need and analyze it, and we would have an opportunity to have a single-point person to look at that, that one opportunity then is to say, you know, these things need to change, or this other opportunity, which maybe is more money, $25,000 or something like that, you know, doesn't occur. But I'm happy to do that. Secondly, I would like to make a case for the business license fee as appropriate. Tourism has always been an important component of the economy, of economic development. It's one of the county's major employers. It brings into, this is just county statistics, $448 million annually. The money changes hands six times in our community supposedly, employs almost 5,000 people in the county. The overnight stay, when people stay at, we only have one facility, $177 a day per person supposedly, these are TDC statistics. And so it's really, it is a significant economic engine in the county, so that's why it made sense to me. So, I'm going to respond.
That's a perfect sales pitch for why the money should go specifically to a purpose that helps the museums, not a consultant.
Oh, I'm happy with that. I'm way happy about it.
Well, the other thing is...
Do you want to put that on the table?
Well, I'm saying, when we first started dealing with this issue, there was a financial need to some degree to keep the museums open for the summer. I think that the CHP did have some funds that probably could have kept the museums open a little longer than they were. But now, they've done substantial fundraising, probably equal to the amount of $25,000, so I'm not so sure that our $25,000 is needed to open the museums for the summer.
I believe that the goal is $80,000. They've raised $25,000, so there's still that gap. And the county, the last thing that Commissioner Lihan said was that they're looking for an incentive or a matching grant, that would we consider $5,000 to $10,000 as a match also to hook up with theirs to get them open. So, yeah, so that's on, it came from her. Commissioner Neely?
You have the direction the commission is actually to assist in the opening of the museums. From my standpoint, it has to be focused on the End of the Trail Interpretive Center, simply because it's a city-owned facility. And how I view this consultant is perhaps a little bit different. First of all, I don't know that the, I think one of the staff people may have said something about consultants and whether they're worthwhile. I don't know if the Clackamas Heritage Partners did specifically at that meeting or not. But this consultant is working for us. It's not working for the Clackamas Heritage Partners, it's reporting to us. I'm looking at it this way. I want to determine whether or not the current system of management is what we need is going to work for us at the End of the Trail Interpretive Center specifically. I think we, I think we got our, all of us have our emotions caught up in this particular issue, and I thought, from my standpoint, the consultant would be somebody that could come in in a more disfashioned way to look at the issue. I mean, based on what happened, I was, I would have said, let's just say the Clackamas Heritage Partners doesn't even manage our facilities, we look for a different management. Boy, to try to do that for the current season would be a disaster. I think we all recognize it. And if, in fact, if the commission wishes to move a given direction to provide financial support to the opening of the museums, I think we should focus on the museum for which we have obligations. And so this discussion may go on for a while in terms of what the mechanism is going to be to do that. But I did want to make a statement because I mentioned John Salisbury, if he was going to make it, he was going to come in late, and I haven't seen him come in, but he's an employee of the National Park System, and he was talking to me about the impact of the Interpretive Center specifically being closed. They had four school groups that were going to make a tour, included the McLaughlin House, I got to get that one right.
Yes, Dr. McLaughlin.
And four of them, three of them dropped out simply because they could not make a day trip out of it. One of them, they, one of them were able to arrange a day trip that included the Fort Vancouver trip instead, and were able to go to the McLaughlin House. So the non-CHP museums are feeling the impact of this closure in a major way. So I think we've got to do something to specifically open the End of the Trail Interpretive Center. And that would, if we want to go a different direction than that and use the money in that way, I think that's all right. But I think we're still faced with the question of how are we going to ultimately deal with the management issue?
Long-term.
And I was hoping that consultant would look, would be able to look at that specific question and look at it dispassionately. And it's very difficult for me to look at it dispassionately at the moment.
You know, I think we all have our individual views, but if someone could put, I mean, we do have to determine what the city assistance wishes to be. I, for one, can't imagine having these facilities dormant. And sometimes, you know, it's a responsibility of the community to kickstart things into action, and I'd like to kickstart it. I can go either, I can go either way because I think both are very, very helpful. The consultant, to me, buys some time, but it's up to where you want to go, Commissioner Nocita.
I think my perspective's a little different. First, I do want to thank Mr. Porter for sending us the information that he sent us. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Fowler and Mr. Danielson for having a thick skin from their last appearance here. But I do, I think my position is, I think, informed by our own budgetary situation in the city and looking over what we were presented with as far as these transfers and seeing that word contingency several places. The fact remains to me that there were specific decisions made by the CHP board, for example, spending money on the Skyway project planning, that kind of took the organization's eye off the ball to their basic, you know, mission. I just have some significant difficulty, given the need within our own city, to spend money on Clackamas Heritage Partners. I mean, part of the responsibility of being on a board is to raise money, to organize fundraising, to oversee management. And I, you know, when I think of all the ways we could spend $25,000 taking care of our own house in these budgetary times, I've not come near the threshold where I think I can spend the money on a consultant or for any purposes for this organization. I mean, to give an example, I mean, as far as economic development goals, whatever goals is to hire an economic development staff. $25,000 would go a long way towards that. You know, an economic development officer, this could be one project out of many projects that, you know, an individual might take on. Clackamas Heritage Partners is in the process of raising money, and I think it is their responsibility to take care of their own house. I go back to what Commissioner West said earlier tonight about, you know, with the Oregon City Public Schools as opposed to Clackamas Community College. There's a bit of a slippery slope thing going on here to me also. I mean, if we do this with Clackamas Heritage Partners, why not, you know, any other entity in the city that, you know, has, provides economic development through tourism or any other matter? What, you know, how about what, do we assist Lamont Falls Hospital? Do we assist Blue Heron? You know, there are a lot of people, a lot of organizations in financial need. I've not been close to being able to support this, and I'm still not after the discussion tonight.
Okay. Commissioner West?
Must be my turn. Well, heated issue, isn't it? I'm trying to be as logical as I can about this whole process. For instance, there is so much, some mistakes have been made in the past, perhaps, by CHP. There's been some problems, there's communication issues, that kind of thing. So the number one thing I really do support is a third-party consultant. It's like getting your books audited. And to have them analyze their operations, everything from maybe even their ticket fees to their board, it gives us that objective perspective that each of us here in the room are having a tough time doing. And it'll also, because there's so much bitterness about all past problems, it will help us identify what some of the problems are and give us, you know, give us some options for directions and how to, if it needs restructuring, new staff, whatever. So I'm totally supportive of that. And for instance, it might even say, maybe the access project is not a good idea. Who knows? So, but at least then we'll have an outside opinion because we're all saying it's our friend or our enemy right now running things, so depending on whose side you're on. So this gives us a whole independent thing. And as far as, you know, Jim, what you're saying, and helping all the agencies that, you know, you haven't been here a whole year, there'll be many more that'll come and ask for help, and I unfortunately, I wish we could help them all. But, you know, we own that facility on the End of the Oregon Trail Center, so that's a little different. And right now, we're sitting there, I know it frustrates you to death that we have a Carnegie Center empty. Well, now we'll have two of them empty. And so I think we have a little more vested interest in this than, you know, another, like, some other things. So I'm supportive of this $25,000 for the consultant, and if even, if need be, I'd even support $25,000 to a bridge opening if that would help with county funding and get them open. Oh, and my personal experience was, I was just out antiquing in Aurora the other day, and I had our Oregon 150 brochures. Oh my goodness, did I hear about the museums in Oregon City?
Everybody.
And, you know, we kind of think that it's just little old us here, and this is our problem. These museums are a statewide asset, and it's our history, and it's our pride, and it's, I think we have to invest in who we are. And then the other day, I was down there, I had to get some papers for something, and I couldn't believe how many people came into the Interpretive Center while I was there. What? It's closed. I mean, because I'm not in there all the time, but it's a sad thing. So a consultant will help us identify what and where changes could take place or need to take place, and then I agree that we got to get some money to keep them open for now.
Commissioner Neely?
There are probably two ways we can structure it. We have to look at one point or another, the management of the facility. We could look at it as figuring out how we could support the opening of the Interpretive Center and then, and getting that going for the year, and then take a period of time to look at the management, I'm going to say management failures, of that facility and how we're going to deal with them. So we could deal with the museum opening first, look at the management, or we could look at the management concurrently with the opening of the museums. There's no commitment on our part at all to contribute money to the opening of the museums. But somehow, we've got to structure that. Which really comes first? Are we concurrently looking at the management while we open the things, in which case we want to put that as soon as we can, really, to get that evolution going? Or do we just worry about opening that museum now and then work out the management before the next season? I mean, we may not have, we may not have a 365-day facility, no matter what, how we look at it, but at one point or another, we got to look at the management. I think consultant, a dispassionate evaluation of it is the best way to go. I think it's a case of what's the best way to stage it.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yes, Commissioner Smith?
So my only concern then is, my concern with the consultant then still is, the consultant comes back and they're giving us the answers, whatever, you know, these are the problems. We don't really have any, any way to enforce those other than kicking CHP out of our building, which is a huge problem then for us. So in what other way do we have, as a city, to enforce the findings of this consultant? Because in the end, it comes down to whatever CHP wants to do, and that's my real concern about.
It's, we have the checkbook, and that is the clout that we have, is that we have the checkbook and the county has a checkbook.
For the future, we've already spent $25,000 on a consultant. We're not going to pay the consultant till they're done doing their work. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that the consultant gives us the recommendations. If, and I, the way that I would structure it, as I have with other nonprofits, is that, you know, these changes are made, and then you offer up some money. And I think the county would be willing to look at that as well for additional funding. I mean, CHP, we fund this now, that isn't long-term and sustainable. It is just for this, and right now, what we're looking at is perhaps funding just to October. They haven't gotten funding to the end of the year, but the summertime is when they can actually break even on their operations. So, yes, Commissioner, Ms. Patterson?
If that is a sticking point, and you're looking for a mechanism to make sure that whatever you do with a consultant could be implemented, what you could do, if, is something that you could agree on this evening, you could approve the expenditure or commit, make the commitment for the expenditure, ask us to work with CHP in regards to modifications in the management agreement, and bring that back for your approval next time. That would give you maybe some comfort that whatever you did could be implemented.
Possibility.
Just a thought, if you want to look at it.
We do have that, too. And I think we've had enough discussion. I know that we all have angst about it, and we have a couple of mechanisms to think about. But I don't see anyone saying that we don't want these museums open. And the Interpretive Center is the one that brings in the funding. And, you know, it appears from the emails that I've gotten that there's a flurry of activity happening within CHP, as Jim alluded to, to raise money and to raise volunteers and have, I think a whole new group of people is re-energized. So, you know, hopefully that can all work positively. Commissioner Neely?
I have a request before we make any decisions. Several years ago, when the overall license fee was increased, the nature of it is some businesses paid a little less, most businesses paid a little more, including us, sole proprietorships. I've also got a business license in Oregon City. It was actually the Chamber of Commerce that came to us to...
There is...
I know that, I want to introduce this, though.
Okay, great.
The Chamber of Commerce actually petitioned us to increase the business license fees, but with the, with the, with the understanding, in fact, it was, I think, maybe an implementing ordinance that was pushed forward by the then-Commissioner Alec to guarantee those business license monies only be used for economic development. Since the chamber is sort of to blame for the increase in the fees, I was, I believe, I would like to hear if they, in fact, have come to some kind of a consensus or something in terms of what we're proposing here. I don't know what it might be, but I know that was a concern of mine.
Yes, I believe we have a letter. Have you passed those out to everyone? Okay. Commissioner Neely did ask me if I'd ask the chamber. I called Amber Hovek, and this is the, no problem. Yeah, I'll do it. Thank you. And this is the response. And this is the response.
I'm representing the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. Am I on?
Your button on?
That's on.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, I was too close.
And she is unable to be here tonight, so she asked me to come and give this to you. We did have, after our Good Morning Oregon City this morning, she did ask all the present members of the board, as well as the members of the Government and Economic Affairs Committee, I think there was a total of about 12 of us, and we did discuss the feelings, and as you can see, we do ask that it be a, I don't have it right in front of me, I've only read it a couple times, but-
Here's an extra.
Who's going to run down and do it?
I told you'd have to read it.
I don't want to read it. But just do note that we do feel that it's important to bring in an out-of-the-area independent consultant, you know, so that there will be a lot more transparency to it. So, this kind of just, you know, in an informal kind of statement of what we feel.
Thank you very much. Okay, may I have a motion, please, so we can move this forward?
I'm going to ask again for the city manager, his recommendations was to commit up to $25,000 with the, with the specific, understanding with the Clackamas Heritage Partners, that we would work out how to deal with the management of the museums for the current season, is that correct?
Bring back any modification we need to the management-
To the management agreement.
-make it comfortable with what you're doing there. If there's anything else you want to suggest in there, it would be a good time to do so.
Larry, could you say that again, on the, your recommendation, your bridge?
Well, it's, I wouldn't, I don't know if it's a recommendation as much as if you have a deadlock on that, because I felt that there was some concern about, how do you make sure this gets implemented? If you, and I know they're looking for a commitment in regards to funds, if you made a commitment of those funds, again, you haven't taken action yet, because then let us take the next couple weeks and work out modifications to that management agreement, so that maybe gives you some comfort in that, as well as any, you know, if you've got any other direction there, we can bring that back to you for your approval at that time, so.
But you're talking about funds outside of the consultant fee?
Well, whatever you want to spend that $25,000-
Whatever we want to spend it on, yeah.
I'm staying out of it.
So, are you talking, the management agreement between the city and the facility, or the CHP?
It's the management agreement, we have CHP for the operations.
We have an agreement now. That agreement shouldn't, should in fact be modified, and perhaps put some teeth into I'm going to move for $25,000 for-
Up, what'd you say, up to?
Up to $25,000, excuse me, up to $25,000 for a consultant to evaluate the various things that we've been talking about, and that the, and that the Clackamas Heritage Partners and the city look at, look at the current management agreement, and actually construct a new management agreement that has necessary binding requirements on it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. Is there further comment or discussion, clarification needed? Commissioner Smith?
I appreciate the amendments, but I just don't think that will have any change, in my opinion.
Okay, Nancy, ready for the vote?
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Nacita?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye.
Motion passes three, two.
I don't, I doubt that any of us are completely comfortable with what's transpired, I'm not. But like I said, I think there has to be a dispatch mechanism of taking a look at the management of the facilities, and I don't know, I'm, I don't, I know I couldn't be disfashioned about it, and I think it's pretty clear that several of us couldn't be. And the transparency issue, too, that the Chamber specifically made reference to, I think is a very important one.
Any interest in matching funds for opening?
You mean for us to come up with funds at this point?
Yes, if we wished to. That's the, that's the challenge that the county gave to us.
And I'm sorry, Mayor Norris, will you review what the county, if we put $25,000 up, or whatever we put up, they match?
No, CHP would have to. The county's considering a larger sum, probably.
Are they still on the $87,000, or is that-
Yeah, but that's different, they're considering a possible different one, where they would require a match, whether it's one to two, one to one, we don't know. But they just asked if we would consider something as well, you know, five to 10,000, something, whatever we would be willing to do. Is there any interest in that?
Well, I'd have, I think we have to have some dialogue about what that source of that funding is going to be, actually.
I'll be out the business tax again, but if there's no interest in it, we should move on.
I don't think I'm prepared to do that at this time. I'm interested in figuring out how to get them open this summer, but-
Okay, that's, we have one decision made, so let's move on.
We have somebody to make a comment from the audience, that's fine, if she does.
That's what I wanted to say. Thelma, come on up. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay.
She's gone to X number of meetings today.
Yeah.
She's meeting out.
Meanwhile, I wake up. Thelma Hagan-Miller, Oak Lodge resident. In listening to this discussion, and listening to all the other meetings that I've been about, this whole issue, there still is the issue of timing, and consultant is not going to get those museums open-
No, that's not the purpose.
...in a timely manner. That is a definite concern of mine. So, I'm going to make a suggestion, that I'm going to put out on the table, that you refer back to the TDC. The TDC, at their meetings, specified through Linda, that the $87,000 that went to the two firms, Jones &amp; Jones and Eco Northwest, was a valuable study for the river project that the TDC has been involved in for a number of years now, and that would benefit the whole region. I think that perhaps a recommendation from you guys, that the TDC actually do go by the studies from the CHP, will then give money to the CHP to, that can turn around and perhaps be put towards getting them open in a timely manner, where, while they're still raising the other monies that they need to match anything else that might come out there. But it's kind of a win-win situation, the CHP gets the $87,000 that they, as I understand it, have already put out for those studies, and it's beneficial to the TDC to have those studies, so-
And they assume the ownership of those studies.
And they assume the ownership of those studies from CHP. So, I'm just throwing it out as a thought to put to you guys, to take back to the TDC, because of course, they would have to revote, because that's not the way their vote was originally, and they took no vote yesterday, as I understand it.
Right, because they didn't have the information, but I've talked with all parties, and I believe that's the understanding, that they know that the action that we take is the leverage that we have to offer.
Yeah.
Okay, but I just think you should add in-
I move, I move that we support the procurement of the, the studies for the rivers project, is that what you were calling it?
Heritage trip.
Falls Access-
Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition, actually.
No.
The Falls-
Oh, yes.
Procurement of the Falls Access project, that the-
Those two studies.
For those two studies, that the city commission supports that purchase.
By the county?
By the county.
By the county.
By the TDC, yeah, by the county.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. Really, just emphasizing what we did with the TDC, and urging them to release those funds. Any further comment or discussion? Nancy, the vote, please. Oh, excuse me, do you have a comment?
I just had more of a question, I'm not sure what the content of those studies are.
Those are the ones you have?
That we just got tonight?
We just got tonight. Yeah, that's the, that's the ones, the one from Eco Northwest, and the one from Jones &amp; Jones. Those are the two.
This is, yeah, this is in support to them procuring the studies. I don't know, it's their decision of how they want to use those, or whether it's good- Their funds, I think, all come from actually hotel, motel taxes of the county, so these are specifically tourism-based funds, unlike our business tax, which is not. So, it is rather specific in terms of, it's something that they in fact can purchase.
And they've been very involved in all of the river fund activities, but, and particularly this guy, Commissioner West.
I was going to say, Jim, to me, that motion sort of says to, says to me in this community, that this project is a little bit larger than the CHP taking on it, that there's a lot of partners invested in, in developing this project. So, it's kind of, it's, gives it a little more legitimacy, if you ask me.
And this doesn't, well, for one thing, it-
I mean, if you're struggling-
I want to, I want to be clear, that actually, this doesn't support the study. This is simply supporting the purchase of that particular study. It doesn't say anything, it doesn't, I want to be clear, that it doesn't say the city commission at all supports any of the findings from the study.
Correct.
And I think, I think that ought to be made clear, if that's an issue for somebody that's supporting or not supporting this particular motion. This motion is not intended to support any of the findings of the study.
Now, this, this does, is what the meeting was about, is to help to trigger the funds, that we formally, it's a declaration that we would like the TDCs to be a partner in making sure the museums get opened. That's all it is. Commissioner Nacita?
I will, I'm sure I'll be outvoted on this, but I have to stand up for my neighbors along the promenade, who have never gotten, you know, any input or knowledge that what is being planned throughout this, through these documents, was going to be thrust into the heart of our neighborhood.
I bet Matt Graham-
I think that.
And so, I, I'm, I'm not going to go for that.
I just want to point out that, you know, the neighborhood could go ahead and tell the TDC at an open forum, that they, they don't support the study at all, and who knows, how that might drive it. So, I'm not, I'm not indicating any support of the study on this.
It's just simply to make sure that the funding is supported, that's all it does. Commissioner Smith?
I think Commissioner Neely makes a very good point, and, because I think there's some aspects of the study, and the potential of the falls, and all those other elements that I, I can see. Huge potential, what can happen there, I'm not supportive of a lot of aspects of it, but believe it or not, I think I could support this motion.
Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four, one. Okay, we need a five-minute break, so we will, we, in recess, oh, yes, please, before we go.
Thank you. I just want to thank-
Please introduce, please introduce yourself.
Dan Fowler, Chairman of Clackamas Heritage Partners. Jim, thank you for your kind words to start out with. I want to thank you for your action tonight. I think that a lot has been said, a lot of motions have been high, but if we're going to open the museums, we have to clear the air, and I think an independent look will do that. We'll take any recommendations that come from that study most seriously. So, I think this is a step on the right path to do that. It's the only way our museums are going to survive, is really with us coming together and not being divided, so I think it's a good move.
Thank you. Okay, we are in recess for five minutes. With item 7J, which is a resolution 9-08, authorizing vacation of sections of Caulfield Place, tract C.
She's moving it.
Yes, there's been a request to move that forward, because there are people here for this. And the staff report on that, Nancy Krescher?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a resolution that begins the vacation process for some property that was included in a tract in ownership of the city, that had been, for stormwater purposes, at Caulfield Place subdivision, which is off of Caulfield Road, probably best known to you guys as just west of the Two's Pond. And what the owner of the property, of the subdivision is wanting to do, is use some property to develop a few more lots. And if you have, I think in terms of explaining the proposal, we do have the developer and his engineer here tonight, the civil engineer is Monty Hurley, and he would be best to answer specific questions about the proposal. If the resolution is approved tonight, then we would move forward with the vacation process, and bring back an ordinance later on for your final approval.
Questions that you would like to add?
Yeah, actually, I-
Let's come forward then.
Want to get some answers?
Thank you.
I'd actually like to know the-
Just go ahead with the question.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to actually know the juxtaposition of this particular area that you're, that we're considering for initiating a process for-
Yeah, me too.
Annex, not annexation, for vacation, its juxtaposition to the pond itself, to Two's Pond.
Okay, I'm Monty Hurley with AKS Engineering, and, and to answer that question specifically, Two's Pond on the map we have here, I didn't overlay an aerial photo on it, but it is in tract E. And if you look at where the plat vacation would happen, it's actually between tract C and D. So, hopefully that gives you some perspective, we're not actually adjusting up.
There's a map that includes the pond on page 11 of your packet, Commissioner Neely.
Okay, and the stream, and the stream leaving Two's Pond, where is that relative to tract C?
It's actually north of tract C, so it's on the properties to the north.
And that's shown on page 11 of your packet as well.
So, on page 11, the dark spot is Two's Pond?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, would you talk briefly about the, about the purpose of the vacation, and how, why it's necessary?
Let me probably start with some background, because that would probably make the most sense.
Okay, thank you.
There was a proposal for a subdivision, it had, in that proposal, it had tract C and tract D. Tract C was for a stormwater facility, tract D was actually going to be for a sanitary sewer pump station. And, and after preliminary plat approval, we worked with the city engineering staff to come up with a solution that was better, it was not desired to have another pump station, and we actually put in a sewer line that, that was able to be a gravity sewer line. And so, that tract was no longer, no longer needed for the pump station, and now it's a vacant tract. And looking at that tract, and trying to make an efficient and appropriate use of that land, it was determined that by doing a small plat vacation with tract C, it could actually be developed with a fourplex that's similar to the way the other lots are platted. And we thought that was an efficient and appropriate use. By doing this plat vacation, it by no means approves any sort of subdivision or anything else, there'll be a separate process for that, that'll actually go back in front of the city commission. But at this time, that would enable an efficient use, and tract C was frankly dedicated to the city, and was originally under ownership of the developer, and if we had, at the time, kind of seen what was going to happen there, it probably wouldn't have been dedicated, but at the time, like I said, it was, it was anticipated to be a pump station, so.
Commissioner Nacita?
Just to clarify with Mr. Ponkel here, you plan to do additional development? You mentioned another apartment building?
No, tract D would be further divided in the future, is the plan.
It would be further divided in the future? Okay. Would, how many lots, would there be, a partition or a subdivision?
Four-lot subdivision.
Okay. But you don't have- But you don't have any plans for that in the immediate future?
There are plans for that in the fairly immediate future, after the plat vacation, yes.
Would there be any benefit gained just by doing the plat, the vacation with that subdivision application?
Mr. Sullivan?
It's a little hard with the no-changing-the-goalpost rule, because you'd have, you'd have already a dedicated area, and it's two separate processes. I think they're doing it the right way. They're bringing the vacation first, and then seeking to develop it. And the development would come before the planning commission necessarily, before you if there were an appeal.
And actually, I think they're, I agree, I think they're going about this in the right steps, because, you know, you've got tract D, you've got tract C, which is a larger storm pond. We need to get the ownership into the applicant's hands, so that they can, so that they can, you know, with their application, run that. And part of the problem is that tract C is actually, is a zoning designation of an R10, and then tract D has a zoning designation of the R2. So they're gonna be requesting a comp plan amendment, a zone change, and the subdivision, which would come in front of this board for approval. But just for, in terms of processing this application, it would be a lot cleaner if they had, if it's vacated, they take ownership, and then they have that application with just the amended tract D, and that's all that we're looking at.
And it is, is this section one and section two on this map is what's being vacated?
Yes.
And those are currently part of tract C?
That's correct.
And who owns tract C?
The city.
And do we-
It's for stormwater purposes, for the stormwater pond.
So are they purchasing this vacated property from us?
No, it's going to be vacated. And we've consulted with the city attorney on this, and given the fact that it was, probably it's best for council to explain to you why it was recommended that they vacate it, rather than we do a property acquisition or property transfer.
Well, the vacation merely says the city no longer has an interest in this property, and it would revert to the previous owner of the adjacent tracts.
And so they are the previous owner?
Yeah.
The developer is?
Yes.
So we're just giving back to them what they had already?
Right.
If I could add in that plat was frankly recorded less than a year ago, where it was dedicated to the city, and this was more of an oversight, I guess, on our part. It wasn't part of the initial, original plans, because we were gonna do a pump station there.
And we had a lot of discussion about how to process this, too, and we felt it would be better to get the, if the vacation went through, it would be better, because we weren't very comfortable being co-developers as a city. We felt like we might not be in a good position to be making recommendations, et cetera, if we were a co-applicant with this developer.
And there is a pretty large financial, you know, the applicant's taking on for the code amendment, for the zone change, comp plan amendment, subdivision, you know, all the engineering work they need to go into that. If the vacation is not even an option, it's something the commission would want to consider, it would, we also thought it'd be good to get that up front instead of at the very end of the process.
Commissioner Neely?
I will tell you, I thought this area was gonna be served by a pump station. When I saw the sewer line going over Caulfield Creek, which is what it does, I was very upset. And when I, they've made some corrections, you had kids going from the apartment complex walking across that pipe. They've got fencing up there now. But there are also some very large conifers that are standing around that pipe. If any of those ever go down onto the pipe, I don't think the pipe's gonna support, it's going to break. I don't think it's in our interest to proceed with this vacation, because we might find that if that pipe, for one reason or another, ever becomes unserviceable, we may have to go for a pump station again. If we don't have a place to put it, then that becomes an issue.
Okay, and this, none of these properties are adjacent to the pond, so that the ecology of the pond isn't really affected by this vacation?
When we reviewed the initial subdivision for Caulfield Place, we applied our water quality resource area overly district. So the way this development's laid out, it needs all of our requirements for buffer areas and whatnot, so.
Under the new nature neighborhoods stuff as well? Setbacks and all that? Okay, which is in our code.
It was, it was under, yes, all of our adopted water quality that was in place last year, when this, yes, two years ago now.
So could I get a question from Commissioner Neely? Are you concerned now, or are you concerned just satisfied?
No, I'm still concerned. I don't, I'm not, I'm not, I don't really, that's not the water quality issue, it's the fact you've got a gravity pipe servicing it that could be undermined by the flow of Caulfield Creek, that I see very large trees are right near that that could fall onto that sewer pipe, that at one point in the future, it may be a, it may not be able to service here, and we might have to go for a gravity flow pump. And where would we put it if we had to do it?
Could you respond to that, Nancy?
Please. I, the reason why we preferred not to have a pump station there is because of the long-term operations and maintenance costs of having an extra pump station down there. I would probably say that we could design a gravity pump, a gravity pipe to withstand forces, and I do know that it's on a foundation that's fairly deep, that is intended to hold if there are, if there's erosion in the stream. And, Monty, is that a ductile iron?
Yeah, I just, it's, there's an engineering structural analysis done on that pipe. It's ductile iron, and it's mega lug, or which essentially is a rigid connection. Once you put those pipe pieces together, you can't pull them apart. It's a very rigid connection, I guess.
And the pipe itself is very, very strong, so I can't say for sure whether or not the pipe could ever break in a tremendous blow to it, but I think the odds are fairly low.
What was your concern, Commissioner Neely? It seemed to be not only about the strength of the pipe, but the additional development that would take place?
No, it's the fact that, it's the fact that I believe that we would, we potentially could have the use of having a gravity pump in that area, if that pipe does fail.
So you think the city might need that?
It could.
In the future, is what your point is?
I mean, these, these conifers are well over 100 feet tall, and maybe the pipe could stand it.
But with the vacation that's proposed-
Well, that's what, that's what that area was thinking, it was thought of to be used as for the pump station.
Tract D today is not the city's, is that clear to you?
Hmm?
Are you clear that tract D today is not-
Well, I understand that.
Okay.
I'm talking about a future public use for that area, and that's what we're supposed to consider when we're considering vacations.
But I guess my question for Commissioner Neely is, given how small section one and section two are, could we resolve your problems even if we did do the vacation?
Well, would you have an area that could support the pump station, if you did that? I mean, that's what it was for.
You're talking about tract C?
My understanding-
It's tract, it's tract C, but-
Well, where was, where was the pump station designed to be?
It was originally designed to be on tract D. Tract D is now owned, is not owned by the city. Tract C is owned by the city, as a stormwater facility.
And-
We could provide, and this would not happen as part of the plat vacation, but I'd envision it as part of the, any future development plans there. We could provide some sort of engineering analysis addressing the tree issue. I'd have to, it's a little bit of a question mark to me, but I'd have to work with the structural engineer, and I think we could provide analysis demonstrating that the pipe system there is adequate.
You own, the developer owns tract D?
Correct.
And that's the one that's planned for a future four-lot subdivision?
True.
Okay.
Proposed.
And that's, that's no, was that ever in the city's ownership?
No.
Tract D was not.
The question is whether there'd be an area where you could have a pump station if it was required.
I guess I'd also like to point out, you know, they, you know, tract D, you know, we're trying to maximize the, you know, through these vacations, the ability to get four-lots, four-lot subdivision on there.
Right.
You know, there's nothing that restricts the applicant from coming in with two-lot under the existing conditions, so that, you know, denial of the vacation doesn't guarantee that that property's still gonna be available.
Well-
And I also, and may I just, real quick, is that, you know, we have tract E next to it, which is a very, very large water resource area, you know, of which a pump station could be placed in if that were a necessity at a future date. It's not, you know, as originally proposed, but there are opportunities.
Yeah, I'm trying to address and understand Commissioner Neely's concern, because for myself, I don't see how refusing to vacate those two small pieces, section one and two, would allow us extra land for a pump station.
If the city, if the city felt that there were lands there that were suitable, that could be used for a pump station, should we need it, then I guess I wouldn't have as much concern about it.
Yeah, I don't hear concerns from our staff that there wouldn't be space, so I'm kind of trying to reconcile those two.
I have, I have an additional question, too. We've got a Trails Master Plan, which has a trail, that should have a trail through this area, and I'm wondering if that, in fact, where that exists.
There was an easement provided for that trail in tracks, I believe, A, B, and E, which was a condition of approval of the development, and there is an easement in place on the final plat.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
I'm assuming that the space in, there's a space there between 79 and tract D, that's access for our property?
Right.
For the stormwater line?
To, to, to the storm pond, there's a large storm pond.
Oh, the pond, yeah, right.
If there was a, if we got into an emergency situation where we couldn't figure out a structurally sound gravity transmission or conveyance to the existing pump station, and we absolutely had to build another pump station, you could build it in the cul-de-sac of Settlement Place, where Travel Road and Settlement Place come together. It would not meet our current design standards for pump stations that require a building, but you could put a packaged pump station in the cul-de-sac if it was an emergency. It wouldn't be the kind of thing we would prefer. But we would also prefer to see a gravity sewer conveyance to our existing pump station.
Okay. If questions are answered, may I have a motion, please?
I'll move that. We approve resolution 0908, the initiation of the vacation of portions of Caulfield Place number one, tract C, and authorizing the mayor and the city recorder to execute it.
Is there a second?
I'll say for discussion.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Is there further discussion?
Your clarification, we're starting a process. When it comes to the actual vacation, comes back to us. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we like it again? See no further questions, Nancy, or comments? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
She's, she's-
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's under the desk.
She says aye.
Abstain?
And Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go back to the original order of the agenda, which means we're taking 7B. This is an agreement regarding the stimulus package and regarding McLaughlin Promenade, 7th Street to 1st Street in Oregon City. Nancy Krescher, you have the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We've received $1.065 million in American Recovery and Reinvestment Act funding, which was approved by the US Congress a couple of months ago. And this money is to go towards the restoration work of our McLaughlin, John McLaughlin Promenade. And in order to go through the process of spending the money, we need to enter a local agency agreement with ODOT that stipulates all the obligations of our agency and their agency in completing the work. And we're asking that you approve that local agency agreement, so that we can move forward with completing the work and accepting the money.
Would you explain the budgeting?
Yes, the $1.065 million is a reimbursement grant that will be paid by, again, like I said, by the ARRA funding, and then I noted on here, so there would be full disclosure of the actual budget impact, that there's also been a contract approved by the Urban Renewal Commission for the engineering consulting services to prepare all of the plans and specifications for the bid, and then also to provide construction oversight.
Okay. If there's no questions, may I have a motion, please?
I have some discussion. I have, and I've been thinking about this since the Urban Renewal Commission meeting, and actually beforehand also. I would like to have this project, at a minimum, go before the urban, sorry, the Historic Review Board. And actually, I would like to go even further and have this commission oversee this project at every juncture, and here's what my thoughts are. To me, the promenade and the grand staircase are one of the singular landmarks of Oregon City. I live on the promenade, I walk it every day, and I've seen some things that were done in the past, probably even before any of us were here, as far as restoration or upkeep, that I don't think were historically accurate. Just, I mean, simple things like railings that were replaced, not in the original composite, but just like, you know, kind of like plain, smooth cement. And I'd really, there is a right way to do this project, and there is a wrong way to do this project. And, you know, just with all the accelerated timelines on this, or at least the impression I have of accelerated timelines, I want to make sure it's done right. And I want to make sure that, you know, our city process is both Historic Review Board and this commission, that we review the plans, that HRB review the plans, the engineering drawings, and just, you know, make sure that it's being done correctly, because, you know, it's a hugely significant part of our city.
Commissioner Neely?
I have no problem with having the Historic Review Board look at the project. We can put that in the, we can somehow incorporate that perhaps in the motion before us, and we would want to comment on, too, we do not want to undertake a management of anything that's not a job.
Yep.
However, regarding the smoothness of the material that went in there, what you see in the terms of that rough thing, we were told was probably not the original, was not the original wall, that in fact it is the effect of acidity and solorth coming to the mills that had eventually eaten away at the concrete that was already there. So what you might see in the smoothness that exists in some of the reconstruction may closer resemble what it was like to begin with. And what you see is the history of the, what's been going down there on the wall itself that has created that rougher, rougher thing.
I'm wondering-
That's where I would really appreciate the input of someone like Christina on this.
Right, you bet. I agree with you.
Exactly.
I agree with you.
But I really need to see, we need to keep on top of it.
Okay, yes, and I agree, but what you missed was a very extensive, very convincing report that we had many years ago, and I'm wondering if perhaps we can have that, I don't want to do anything to slow this down, because we can't, we'll lose the money. And so, but perhaps a full report like we had previously with the lines and arrows and pictures would be helpful, since, I don't know if Doug had that, too, but it was helpful to me. Commissioner Nocita?
Quick question for you. Looking over this, there was something about the money having to be obligated to receive the money. But is, that's not, that's not the same thing as having to complete construction, you know, at a certain, by a certain time?
No, but the bids need to be awarded by, within the 120 days from the signing of the ARRA, and I believe it's June 16th is when the bidlet will be. That's the bid opening.
Okay, so we're in April now. I think that gives us time.
Actually, the plans and specifications are, have to be submitted to ODOT six weeks in advance of that, so they can process them and get them ready to go to bid. So we're, they're, we're at, we'd be happy to have people to come, and we can always do change orders and things of that nature, but I guess what I'd like to do is, at- and things of that nature. But I guess what I'd like to do is at least try to instill and use some confidence that the work that Wallace Engineering has done and the work that's been done in the past, and in fact, we hired the architect that we had previously had working with us and consulted with Pioneer Waterproofing, who's done the Crown Point on the Columbia River. They've done, they did, on Mount Hood, they did...
Crater Lake?
Timberline Lodge?
Yeah, Timberline Lodge. They did Crater Lake. And they have extensive experience in not only making it look the same, but using, they sample the materials, make sure they're matching aggregate size, finishes, et cetera. So if we would, if you would like us to ask someone from HRB to visit the site during construction, that would be great. And Christina has been actively involved in this project from, actually from its conception years ago. So I'd like to give you some reassurance that this isn't some fly-by-night set of plans and specifications we put together, and we can even provide you with a copy if you'd like. These are very well thought through to make sure that our little crown jewel remains a crown jewel into the future. So we're not being at all, we're being very, very careful about how this is done. I think I mentioned in the Urban Renewal Commission meeting that we've actually established some special prequalifications for anybody who's going to bid on the project. And the Department of Justice approved them, but it definitely isolates those that know what they're doing on a historic preservation project like this. So not saying that we can also do more during construction and as time goes on, but I want to reassure you that there's been a lot of care put into what will be bid on.
Well, I accept that, and I thank you for that. That doesn't decrease my desire to have it go through the review process. And I just like to figure out, you know, the scheduling on how to do that. The bid, the bidding process can go forward, and when does construction have to commence?
That's determined by ODOT after the bids are awarded. It probably would occur, it would probably start occurring within a month after the bid is awarded. So it'll start, it'll start construction in July.
Knowing that that's a concern, can Nancy bring back to us how that might fit in, or do you know today how that could fit in, or do you need to look at that?
The construction of HRB?
No, if, if, if the project had to be reviewed by HRB.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, absolutely.
Would that give you enough, so that she could look...
Just to find out, you know, what process we'd want to use. Because I, my understanding was it wasn't an HRB review process requirement, but certainly if we just want their involvement, that's great.
Mr. Sullivan?
The lawyers answer again. It depends. And let me clarify that there's a distinction being made between what I hear on HRB informal review and permitting. If a permit is not otherwise required, now, that's going to be Mr. Conkles' call, then you can certainly proceed with an advisory review by HRB during the time that this is being formulated before construction. If this then turns into an issue of changing what has been bid, you have the change order process to do that. But that would leave you as the public contracting authority with that ability to ask for it and perhaps to pay for it.
Okay.
And given the significance, I would consider that.
Okay. Mr. Smith? Do you mean, do you mean having Nancy bring back that schedule and looking at it at that, at that time? Or you want that as part of the motion? What are you seeing?
We, it would be very helpful if we had a clean motion on approving this local agency agreement. If you want to, if you want to direct me to provide information to you and sort of, some sort of a method for there being close review through the HRB and the city commission, I would be happy to do that.
Can we do it that way, just because of the requirements that come with this money? Would that satisfy you?
I ask Mr. Sullivan, can we, as part of the agenda, and considering this agenda item, pass a second motion?
Yes.
Specifically directing staff as to historic review, separate from...
You may do that.
Okay. Well, let's do that, and let's move the process forward, and then consider how we're going to proceed with the historic review.
Okay, did you have a question?
Well, I have a comment. I agree, you know, that, man, the importance of this project. This is an amazing place. And I, so I have just a general comment, and then I have kind of a question out of my own curiosity. But I take many, many people through the summer down that path, and down underneath the tunnel to the McLaughlin House. A lot of them are Oregon City residents, and a lot of them are not. And when they walk down that path, and when they go under the tunnel to the McLaughlin House, they're like, we had no idea this was here. And it's unbelievable to see people's reaction just walking that path. Even people that have lived in Oregon City way too long do not know that exists. It's amazing to see that happen. And so we have to be so right at making this, you know, correct.
I mean, it was my first significant experience with the city. I mean, I know, I know the impact it has on folks, and they just, you know...
Exactly. To add on to that, there's a piece that I don't really see addressed, and I wonder if it's in our thought process for the future. But the Singer Falls themselves is, is a piece that's there that I don't think is included in any of this, but it's kind of along the same lines. And one of my hopes is in the future to see us do some work on Singer Creek Falls, and hopefully sometime in my lifetime, they're relit. So I mean, I, the whole piece and that whole area is such an amazing place, and so I think you're on the right page.
Okay. We do have a citizen comment? Please go ahead.
I'm a mayor and city commissioner. My name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City, and I am co-chair of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. This project is in our neighborhood, and we feel very strongly about it. And I am not an engineer, nor do pretend to be one, and certainly do not want to micromanage this, because I understand that we're on the right track. I have a tremendous amount of faith that the city engineers have a deep respect for the historicity of this, of this area, and will be doing the right thing on it. The idea of having advisory from the, from the HRB is fine. It would be very nice to give some presentation, I would hope, to the Neighborhood Association as to what the plans are, not necessarily asking for our approval, but we might be able to offer some ideas. My main comment is that we would like to know if this is, and maybe this doesn't have to do with this particular motion, but it does have to do with this project, if there's a possibility that in this project, there are two things that we are concerned about. One is signage at either end of the promenade, because right now, there really isn't any sign at the elevator or at the, at the south end of the falls saying, this is a park. This is the, this is the McLaughlin Promenade, and there really isn't any signage. It's a small thing to ask, but we haven't heard any presentations about what that would be in. The second point that I want to make is the, the fact that this council has already approved the intentions of the McLaughlin proposal, that we have a memorial to Keith and Lila Kelly for the works that they did for this promenade area, which we feel is very important. This council has already approved that, and would like to know if that could be included in this design. And I don't know where we fit into that process, but I certainly hope that the McLaughlin Neighborhood is going to be included when this presentation is being made.
Nancy?
I would like, actually, for Mr. Archer to talk about the signage, and it is a park. And we are involved in this from a, from a project that has been talked about for a good eight years, I think, in Oregon City. And we've just continued to try to get more and more funding for it. Now we have the funding, and now other issues start coming up. The funding we requested was for the restoration work. This is maintaining that valuable promenade for us. But, Mr. Archer, could you address the other items that Mr. Gifford talked about?
Thanks, Nancy. I'd like to do that. But before I do that, just, there's, Nancy just touched on something, and I just, I feel compelled to call, to comment on it, that we, it's a park, but I, I want to commend Nancy and Alita and all of the staff that basically from Public Works are working on this project, which really it is a park. But because of the way that it was funded, and that it's a transportation project by definition, they've taken that on, and they have the project management to do that. And they have, they're doing a huge service to our city, and I really appreciate that, and I think Nancy knows that, but I wanted to say that publicly. So regarding the signage and the memorial, I wanted to address that. We are, there are plans and efforts underway. We're coordinating currently with some members of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, who've taken a specific interest in the Keith and Lila Memorial. Specifically, Bill Daniels has kind of taken that on, and I'm sort of coordinating with him as a point person.
Good.
So regardless of this project, although it does tie in, that, that effort is underway. That, we're acting on some previous commission direction from probably back last year or something, that there was an interest in us doing something there. And then as far as the signage, William, we completely agree with you. We've recognized that it's, it's been something that, for some reason, it's been there for decades and decades, but has never been signed properly. And I think signage would be really a nice addition. We're, we're looking at, this is a parks issue. We're looking at whether or not the signage can be tied into the project. It depends on some funding. There's some pretty specific strings attached to this, because it's federal funding and all that. But potentially funding it through the project here, but if not, taking a look at how we might be able to fund a couple of entry point signs at the north and south ends of the promenade is something that really has risen to be a priority for the Parks Department, so.
I might also suggest that we're just putting together the funds for the Tourism Action Plan, and I think we could make, make signage relate very much to that and get county funds for that.
And if there's a further question about that, Mr. Slack of the Urban Renewal Commission mentioned to me today that there's a possibility that it could be even Urban Renewal Commission if we needed that, if we need to dip into that for, for signs and our memorial.
Yeah, I think the TIP funds would be really good.
I think so, too. That's a good place for it.
Commissioner Neely?
Well, since we're on the subject of signage in that area, let me say that...
Quickly, because it's like...
And people coming out the elevator should know which way they go to get to the McLaughlin House, which way they go to get to the Museum of the Oregon Territory, to the Carnegie Center, to the Erma Center House. I mean, everything. And without, without making it look too busy like our current city logo, there's so much stuff on our city logo that I don't know where it came from, but in any case, we don't want, we don't want, we don't want street signs pointing all over the place. But really, that's a focal point. When you get up there, that's taking you to so many of the things that we've got. And really, we don't show how to get there.
Yeah, we've been coordinating that through TAP funds, and I think that's a possibly really good source. Commissioner Nocita?
I'm going to make a motion.
Thank you.
I want to make a motion that the McLaughlin Promenade Restoration Project be submitted to the Historic Review Board for a certificate of appropriateness.
Could we do this one first, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we had already voted on it.
No, no, we have not. If you'd like to move that...
I will, I will move, I will move the approved local agency agreement, 25554, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009, McLaughlin Promenade, 7th Street to South 1st Street, Oregon City.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. See no further comment. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Now, Commissioner Nocita.
Okay. I would like to submit a motion that the McLaughlin Promenade Restoration Act...
You move.
I move that. The McLaughlin Promenade Restoration Project be submitted to Historic Review Board for a certificate appropriateness pursuant to City Code Section 17 dot 40 dot 060.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Now...
I just was wondering what that is, because I need to, there's some real contract issues here and big money that...
Yes, please, thank you. Please do.
What I understand the motion to do, and Commissioner Nocita will have to confirm it, is that this is now a permitting issue rather than an advisory review. And I had thought that there was a distinction to be made in the previous discussion. If you approve the motion, it will go through HRB as a permit, and will be required to go through the process and get a permit. It's appealable. That's purely your call, but I want to make sure you're conscious, and I think it's what Commissioner Nocita meant to do, but I want to make sure that you know the consequences of the motion.
Yes, that's what I meant to do.
Commissioner Neely?
What I wanted to do is know the consequences of the action. Could it torpedo the project?
Right, that's what I'm very concerned about.
And I, it, the Historic Review Board, in fact, is a governing body, as opposed to an advisory body.
It's a permitting body, that's correct.
And so, we can do that. I'm a little bit afraid of the, of the implications in terms of the timeline about, about doing that. And I'd like to be able to vote for this motion, but if I thought it would torpedo the project in some way, I'd be really concerned about it. Of course, it could come to us to undo it, I suppose. I mean, we can, we can take any action that we want to as a city commission and review any decision by the Historic Review Board, but...
I would worry about, I would worry about too much process with the granting of the funds as well. But I thought that our discussion was headed toward an informal review, which I think is just fine, and I think would give tease to the process as well. I'm, I'm concerned about what this might do to the process. Do you have any thoughts on what you seem, you seem really worried about it?
If we, if we report to ODOT that we need to have a land use permit for this, we will not...
Did I get the question?
No. The deadline is the deadline.
Okay. And they're...
Is it just a timing issue? That's the question?
We have got to obligate the money in 120 days, and ODOT will not obligate the money if we have a land use approval to go through. They won't, because these things are not all tied up tight.
Yeah, that convinces me. This money was very difficult to get, and it's very dear money. Not everyone gets it.
I mean, many projects are facing this, Commissioner Nocita, not in terms of historic review, but say, for example, if there's a right-of-way acquisition or anything that takes more time, they're not being able to meet the deadline. Example of the wind or whatever, solar...
Yes, Washington County. And what happens is that if we don't get the money, it goes to the next on the list. And so some of the things that we're waiting for are, for instance, the jug handle money, maybe other states that can't fulfill their money that may trickle to us. So it's not as if we can wait for it and get it again. So I just know how hard it was to get, and I'm just really nervous about, just, but yet I want, I want to make sure it's historically, has that integrity as well. But I was hoping an informal review would do the same thing with Christina involved, which is the same staff for the Historic Review Board. So are we ready for the vote?
There was a second.
Oh, it was? Yeah, there was, actually.
Yes, there was.
I got it out there, but I probably...
There was.
I don't mind voting against my own motion. I mean, I wanted to advance the discussion because I needed to do that.
You may withdraw your motion, if you wish to.
Okay. I, I don't mind doing that, but I...
And the second?
Can I withdraw my second?
Yes.
I would like to withdraw my second.
Okay. Motion is now off the floor.
Wait, I have, no, no, I said I would be willing to, but I haven't, I haven't worked this out in my own mind yet.
Okay.
The timing on an HRB approval would be, would require 30 days' notice?
Here's, and Tony can tell me if I'm wrong. Usually, you have an application, then you have a 30-day period for staff and other agencies to look at it. Then you start the notice process, then you have the hearing and any continuance, and then you have any appeal. So the 120-day period that you normally have, you usually get through 90 or 100 days in a, in a good time. a good time.
And that's really scary.
And how many -- what's like the drop-dead date with ODOT? When would they cut off the money?
If they learned tomorrow morning that we had to go through a land use process, they would say, "You're off. You're done."
I have a hard time accepting that.
Well, I do, too. I do, too. Let me tell you.
We have lists of issues with ODOT. Let me tell you.
I have my own.
It's not even ODOT. It's Federal Highways. It's the whole process by which this bill was written does not lend itself to things that take time and long process.
So are you saying that if we got money for the jug handle, we couldn't do a land use approval on a jug handle project?
There is no land use approval on it.
It depends on the pot of money, too.
But the jug handle, if we receive that money, we would want to be obligating by the end of 2009, which is in December.
All of these pieces of legislation have different motives, and this one is stimulus is what it's aimed at, getting jobs creation, and that's why the timeline's on it. Very competitive. If it's something that takes time, they move on to projects that are ready to go.
Funny waiting.
Are you willing to withdraw the motion?
Well, last question I would ask is, after the money is in our bank, can we go through the HRB process?
This is a reimbursement -- this is a reimbursement grant, so essentially, as we spend the money, they pay us back. It's in the bank, trade or transfer.
Well, then I'm going to need some help from folks on how we can review this.
What about the informal process we were discussing?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess I'd just like to point out that Christina has been a part of this process.
Right, that's what I was saying, too.
All along. And what they're doing in terms of the maintenance, per our code, that's why it hasn't already gone through the land use process, is because it's not required by the code the way it's existing, the way it's currently written. I understand your concern about wanting to maintain the integrity. Would obviously prefer to find another alternative than requiring them to go to a land use decision that they never had to originally, and we would have dealt with a long time ago.
Well, I know codes are subject to interpretation, but I would say this might be a major public improvement.
Mr. Sullivan?
If you're looking for a way of accommodating the concerns that I've heard, the motion to me would be to refer the project to the Historic Review Board for examination and staff review, and to present a report back to the City Commission before construction is undertaken.
How does staff feel about that?
It's okay, as long as we have quorums at Historic Review Board meetings, because I have been through it where we do not get quorums for several months. So just...
This is not a condition. This is a requirement for a report.
That I've been to the HRB before construction begins. I just want to express my concerns.
Better get them there.
They can give a report, I guess. They're not making a decision, so I don't know if they need a quorum, frankly. I mean, it's -- yeah, so they're not making a decision.
Mr. Patterson?
Well, just, this is almost a Sullivanism here, but this is my side of it. Whatever you do here, too, you know, there is -- anything that adds to this, delays this, is a budget implication, and you'll see next week, and particularly on the community development side, it's a big issue for you, even if it's just a little bit. And if you add to the project, it's probably going to be a general fund expenditure because you're going to max out the budget on both the matching and what's coming there, and you're going to have to make that up, and I don't know where you get that. But it may not be anything either.
If you're concerned about a quorum, you could require a staff report presented both to the HRB and to the City Commission, and use that as your basis. And then use whatever comments you get from the HRB to inform the commission.
That works for me.
That works for me, too. And we just -- can we do that without a motion? Can we just ask staff to do that?
Second.
I'd like to have it in a motion.
Okay, please make the motion, then.
I make the motion to do what Mr. Spallos and Sullivan said.
And that is to prepare a staff report for HRB and the City Commission, and to have any comments on that report presented to the City Commission, assuming they're made.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Nancy, do you, Tony, have concerns on this one?
No.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be fine.
Nancy, vote.
And actually, I have a lot of confidence in the plans we have done, so this is, I think getting the scheduling issues out of it makes it very doable for us.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no further comment, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes for a zero. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is Resolution 9-06. This amends the city's capital facilities improvement plan for transportation. Nancy, one of yours again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners. We would like the City Commission to approve Resolution Number 0906, which adds two projects to the Transportation System Plan Capital Improvement Program, one of which is the right-turn lane on Beaver Creek Road going eastbound, if you were going to turn southbound onto Mollala, and the second is the Railroad Safety Improvements Project down at the bottom of Singer Hill.
Okay, other questions about this or a motion, please? Commissioner Smith?
On the Singer Hill, the bottom of the Singer Hill, I think we talked about this at the last meeting. There was comment made that if someone's turning, going up Singer Hill and turning left into the parking lot, that we were okay with people going around. I heard some kind of comment about that. It isn't lined there, and there's room to go around. And I was just at work today, and someone came up to me saying, "You guys need to fix -- the city needs to fix that." And I drive down the hill, and I see someone sitting there parking to get in, and this line up's backing up. So, but I don't know that that's really addressed there, or if that ever -- I mean, is it -- is there any concept or thought in the future on how to deal with that particular issue? Because the issue coming down, I think, I mean, should we be thinking about putting a no-left-turn sign right there? You know, if someone wants to get a cup of coffee and they need to drive up the hill and do a U-turn, you know, drive around the block and come down the hill and get in? Is that -- I mean, why are they sitting there for an hour when they could just -- I don't know. It concerns me.
We could, you know, we could do that, but I can tell you something. The coffee shop I go to is -- people, I should go around the block, all the way around the block, to use the one-way streets to get in the coffee shop. I don't think there's a day I go by, I don't see somebody making a left turn on the one-way street to get into that parking lot. And then, you got the sign to prevent it, but they do it anyway. So we can put the sign there.
Yeah, back to what this does or does not do, please, the motion. You have a motion for adoption, please, or authorization?
Neither of these projects have anything to do with the other stimulus package money we have.
No, these are separate.
These are just --
And actually, the one, which is the right-turn lane on Beaver Creek Road, we had initially thought we could go for stimulus money on it, but we have to acquire right-of-way, and so the timing wasn't going to work out.
The point is, we're not doing this for stimulus money package. We're just, these are two projects that we need to get onto the list.
It's not in the CIB.
I'll move to authorize City Commission to approve. I move to approve Resolution 0906. Sometimes you read this, and that's not what we're supposed to say. Authorize the city manager, no, authorize the approval. I approve. I move for the approval of Resolution 0906.
Yeah, it is a weird one, isn't it? Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith.
I have a question.
Okay, please. Yes, you may.
We have, Nancy, this is a question for you. We add to the TSP last, but the last Transportation System Plan we had came up to us about eight years ago. Is that correct? We have, at some point, we're going to get a renewal of that, and what we're doing is to make sure we have projects that would require, for example, SDC funds to go forward, to have them, if we want to advance those projects forward, we're able to do so.
That's correct. Really, any project that we would want to put in our budget or take any action on, you want to make sure is in your TSP capital improvement program.
Now, the reason I asked that question, that we have, in fact, not approved a new Transportation System Development Plan, was the woman that was from ODOT here when we were talking about the issue with the Agnes Road piece, made the statement that our systems development plan included a bridge into Gladstone. I do not think it does, because I moved to have it removed. That particular language to be removed from the TSP at the same time Eddie Alec made a motion to remove the public transportation piece in. And the specific reason is that bridge was identified as going to Portland Avenue in Gladstone. And I can guarantee you, you would never be able to build a bridge into Portland Avenue with having about every person in Gladstone at our city hall front door. I don't think it's in the TSP.
It is, and I have to go back in the record and see why it ended up in there, if you believe me.
Because I moved to have it removed. There are two motions that were made, one by Commissioner Eddie Alec, which I didn't support, and the other one, which I did, and they both got --
Maybe that's why I was --
Might I bring you back to this evening's agenda?
No, because if in fact, if in fact that was removed by motion, historically, that shouldn't be in the TSP.
I know, but that is not what's on the agenda.
We'll have to do research.
I understand that.
We'll have to go back and look at that.
It is a question we get answered.
We did argue with ODOT that we didn't want a bridge. That's their idea, not ours.
No, that was our TSP.
Well, I know, but when we were talking with ODOT, that was more their idea.
More recently.
But you can't have everyone from Gladstone at your front door. They can't get across that bridge.
Funny. Okay, back to the motion.
You can't get to that bridge when you come to it?
Is there a discussion on the motion? Please. Seeing now Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
And Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes for a zero. Next item is 7D, Resolution 9-7, declaring the necessity and intent to appropriate real property and authorizing institution of condemnation proceedings if necessary. Nancy, scratch her again.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is a resolution that is necessary in order for us to move forward with property acquisition down at the Railroad Safety Project at the bottom of Singer Hill. The, what we, this is all about process in terms of complying with the acts of acquiring property where you may end up having to go into eminent domain, and the city attorney can provide more detail on the legalities of that. But what we must do before we can, before staff can consider starting the process of eminent domain, or even to make an offer to start a transaction process, we need to pass an ordinance or a resolution that says that we could indeed intend to, that we could indeed end up going through eminent domain with the property, so that the property owner is fully aware of the entire process that will proceed.
You just need a little teeth in the negotiations. Mr. Sullivan, do you have a comment?
Not really. It's a necessary part of just even making the offer.
Essentially housekeeping.
Right.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I have a question about this. I would be uncomfortable entering into the domain of eminent domain without giving the property owner the invitation to come talk with us about it. I mean, it's, takings is pretty significant stuff, and I just want to have, you know, the property owner able to chat with us about this, and I'd want to sound out my colleagues regarding maybe tabling this and inviting the property owner to talk to the Commissioner and Mother.
Do you want to do this every time we have an eminent domain issue? Do you want to have two proceedings before you, one to have an informal chat and the other to pass the resolution? Do you want to do that every time? Because that's what's before you tonight.
How often do eminent proceedings occur in the city?
Five, six, eight times a year.
How many eminent issues do we have on Beaver Creek?
Quite a few.
Oh, gosh. Eight, 10?
Yeah, but the people that didn't want to give up the property to widen the street.
Yeah.
Do you know anything about this particular property owner?
Well, yes, we actually have been in conversations with him, and he's aware of the project, and we've had an appraisal done, and we've discussed the appraisal. And in discussing the appraised value with him previously, he has told us that he wants a lot more money for the property. And at first, we thought we might be able to just acquire the property for this project, which is a safety project. And it's clear that we're very, very, very far apart on what we believe the fair market value of the property is. So that's why we are going forward with this resolution to the City Commission.
And what realistically could the property owner do with a piece of property?
It's a strip. Nothing.
Not much.
And most of, it's true in most of them, they're just strips. And actually, we negotiate more than we do have gone through proceedings, haven't we?
Yes. Yes, we actually have ended up usually in mediation.
Commissioner Smith?
Does the, do they lose a parking space there? Or, I've been looking at the map. I mean, does it affect their driveway or their business that much? I mean, it doesn't take away that --
Well, and the other, I would like to point out to the commission that, yeah, it's mostly nothing there. But the thing that I'd like to point out is that there is a safety problem here at this railroad crossing, and one of the reasons, there are many reasons why there's a safety problem here. One is the signal at McLaughlin Boulevard, one is the four-way stop at 10th, and one is a driveway access on 10th Street. And so, I think in the long run, this particular safety improvement is really of value to this property in terms of making it a safer access.
I guess I just can't translate. It looks like there's four parking spaces facing the railroad tracks, and then you see the section that we're talking about. It looks like it might --
No, that's kind of the little, the little island before you get into the parking space.
Okay, cool.
Okay, do we have a motion on the floor? I can't remember.
No, chief.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I move to adopt Resolution 0907.
Thank you. Second?
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there further conversation? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 3-1. Next, we have Resolution 9-9. This is a transfer of appropriations for the current fiscal year, and we have our Finance Director, Dave Wimmer. Walk us in. Still awake, David?
Just elbowed into me.
Oh, good, good.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, it's a resolution like we usually do, like once a year for, or at least once a year. There's, I have explanations on each of these items. There are 20 items on this one. There are three kinds of budget changes. There's the one that just the city manager could do, which are just minor things within a classification. This type is, requires a board resolution, and the more formal type is a sub nominal budget, which there'll be in May, we'll have a couple items for theirs. Anyway, I'm not interested in going through every line item on here if anybody has specific questions on any of them.
I'm sure everybody's had a chance to look at that. Other questions for specific? Mr. Commissioner Neely?
Well, it's not that specific, but I want to create and graduate Public Works for creating more contingency funds than we had to begin with.
Yeah, I noticed that, too. I may have a motion for approval, then, please.
This is so, well
Don't all speak at once.
I, I, I'm just going to say, when I first came on the commission, this process was a little bit confusing to me, but the point is, a contingency fund is to deal with contingencies, and these are line item specific transfers of fund. They're not, they're not, they're not blanket transfers of fund out of the general fund, but they're for specific purposes. I will, I will move to approve the recommended budget changes as specified Resolutional 907.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nacita. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Next, we have Resolution, we were asking for City Commission authorization and a deposit to render ODOT services for the I-213, for the, for the 213, I-205 Redland Road overcrossing. Nancy?
We've been working extensively, Mayor Norris and Commissioners, on the, moving the design of the Jug Handle intersection project at Washington and Highway 213 forward, and ODOT has been spending quite a bit of time on the project with us, and they are the reviewers and approvers of any kind of, any kind of design exemptions, or design exceptions, or the final design itself. And normally, they get paid for their time, and we agree to it in an intergovernmental agreement. In this case, the intergovernmental agreement has not yet been completed for the Jug Handle, but they have asked that they, that we deposit some Monday, some money into, in order to pay for their services. And staff believes this is a good idea. We are trying to expeditiously keep that project in order should we be awarded any funding for it by the end of the year, which we've been talking about a lot tonight. So I recommend that we go ahead and authorize this tonight, and then an IGA will be coming forward that will probably reiterate what's committed to here.
Similar, okay. Thank you. Is there necessary step along the path? May I, are there questions? Commissioner Neely?
It's, it's necessary to do it in this fashion simply because we're having to probably move faster on this than we normally would.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Get ready. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I have a question.
Commissioner Nacita?
Are there any, maybe this is a question for Mr. Sullivan, are there any restrictions on the use of the Transportation System Development Charge Fund?
So as long as it's a, for a project that's in the capital improvement plan, you're fine.
Motion, please. Commissioner Smith?
I just want to thank staff for all the wonderful maps. I, I think there was even maps included on things that didn't even need maps.
No?
And in color.
They're avoiding, they're avoiding complaints.
No, but I appreciate it.
And a motion? Would you like to do that? Go ahead, who's had a read that?
I move I move to authorize the Finance Director, Finance Director to deposit funds to render ODOT services to participate in design meetings, approvals, and plan review for Jug Handle and Redland Road intersection improvements on Highway 213 in Oregon City.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Further comments?
Is the amount $100,000, because that wasn't in the, in the motion, but that was in the staff report?
Okay, add that.
Amendment?
Okay.
Secondly, amendment.
Okay, the move, the motion now includes to deposit $100,000. Okay? With that, Nancy, the vote.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Next, we are going to consider a jurisdictional transfer agreement with ODOT, Molalla Avenue at 213. Similar project. Oh, no, this is different. No, 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 this is, I'm sorry, it's not at all. Nancy, is this yours?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Norris. And this is a situation where it's a bit of cleanup on the paperwork. Highway 213, as you probably all know, used to be Molalla Avenue in Oregon City, and it used to be a state highway, and over the years, it's been transferred gradually to the city. And there was a remnant left down at the intersection of 213 and Molalla Avenue. I'm sure there were good reasons for it back at the time, but at this point, it really makes more sense for the city to take over Molalla Avenue all the way down to Highway 213, and that's what this document does.
Questions or a motion, please?
And then the city can deal with that property ever, however it so chooses.
Yes, that's right.
To own is to control.
I will move to authorize the mayor to execute a jurisdictional transfer agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, transferring jurisdiction of Molalla Avenue at Oregon Highway 213 to the city of Oregon City.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nacita, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further conversation, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Next, item of business is a contract for the removal and replacement of the roof at the swimming pool in the amount of $300,690. Scott Archer?
Thank you, Mayor Norris and City Commission. I think you all know, it's, it's been well documented that our pool roof is in need of replacement. Our, our 2006 pool facility evaluation indicated that we have significant backlog of deferred maintenance, recommends a number of improvements and upgrades, including our roof project, which is one of the more significant.
Is that the pool?
Let me get to those photos in just a moment here.
It's a pool.
That's lovely, isn't it? Our, our recently adopted Parks and Recreation Master Plan strongly indicated that our community supports keeping our existing pool facility at the current location operating and making the appropriate investments to do so. We've, thanks to the support of the Commission through some budgetary actions previously, we've, we've made some, we've been making some improvements here and there. This would be the most significant to date in terms of both cost and basically just overall impact if, if it's approved to go forward. By investing in the, the current facility, our previous studies estimate that we can extend the life of the pool by another 30 years, which is significant. And as, as you know, I think it's, I think we're in our, the pool's in its, about its 42nd year of operation, and I'll tell you that, that, that is a, a pretty good length of time for an indoor municipal pool to operate, especially considering that we haven't done a great job of, of taking care of it at certain, at certain times along the way. But we are, we are trying to make strides, and we've, we've made some good, we've made some good, good strides in that, in that regard. There's an urgency to get the pool replacement done because of its worsening condition, and frankly, at this point, the, the significant damage being caused will, will just continue to get worse, and then, and the, the long-term implications of waiting will become more costly because of, mostly because of the water infiltration that's coming through the roof. And I'm going to talk about that just a little bit here and show you some, some of our wonderful slides that we've got here. I'll, I'll take you through just a short photo tour of what we're looking at. This is, of course, the, the roof from the outside. One of the problems with this type of roof, and this, this particular roof was replaced in, in our best estimate, we don't have very good records, unfortunately, but somewhere between 12 and 20 years ago is, is what, is what we can estimate. But it, it wasn't done very well, and therefore, it's, we're kind of dealing with a lot of those, those issues. So we've got a, a flat roof that does not drain well at all, and it, it gets a lot of pooling, like you see here. I think I've done something here that, oops. Again, just some, some other looks. We've got three levels to the roof. It complicates it even more because we've got all these different levels of, of the roof. Next slide, please, thanks. Again, just some more examples of, of what we're looking at. And then what I'd really like to focus on is showing you some of the effects of the, the condition of the roof, what, the effects that are really telling are from the inside. So if you can do the next slide for me, I'm just going to go through a few pictures from the inside of the building and what the water damage has, has become from the filtration or the water leakage basically through the roof. And you can just, René, keep rolling through those, just several examples of really some very, very bad conditions.
There's our, Sarat Archer doesn't like our style of green roots here.
Yeah, yeah, really.
He can stop on that one for just a moment. In fact, yeah, that, this is one thing I wanted to kind of highlight in terms of some of the issues. The, the leak damage that we're getting in, in all the areas of the building is causing some, some potential and some, some definite structural, mechanical issues, safety and health concerns, and aesthetic issues. And then what we're looking at here is, is our, our main electrical panel in our mechanical room in the, in the basement. And just to give you an example of what, what we're dealing with, and the potential for basically a catastrophic failure, I mean, this is the main, this is the main, kind of the main brains of the pool right here. The water leakage, and you can see some of the water markings and so forth, but we've had to divert, we can't, we can no longer control the fact that the roof is leaking, but internally, we've done some, some makeshift arranging with some piping to divert the leak away from this, from this electric panel, just to give you an example of how bad things have gotten.
I'd like to not wait another minute.
Yeah. I'm sold, I'm sold.
That's, that's the last of the gruesome photos, so
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please, go ahead. I'm sorry, Scott, we're going to interrupt you.
I appreciate, I appreciate your expedition of this
Thank you. Commissioner Nacita?
I move to approve contract agreement in the amount of $300,690 with HSC Group LLC for the removal and installation of roof system, of the roof system at the Oregon City Pool.
Moved by Commissioner Nacita, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no conversation, Nancy, the vote.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero.
Mayor, may I just
Can you get started on that tomorrow morning?
We'll try. Actually, we will be done, if, if everything goes as planned, without any major problems, will be done by June, at the end of June. And the one thing I wanted to mention was, this, not part of this project, but is very much related, and just, just for your information, because we've talked about this before, is in the contingency funding that you actually just transferred just a few minutes ago in another item, we're also going to get the HVAC units on the roof replaced. We're going to do that ahead of putting the roof in, because the timing, that coordination will work, you have to do that before you put the roof on, otherwise, you've got to tear it out. So anyway, we're, we're upgrading our HVAC units on the roof as well, which is, which is, we're actually desperately in need of doing there. One of them has completely failed, and the others are on their way. So thank you again for your budgetary support to do that.
Thank you.
This was not a line item on the budget before the roof. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, this is all, this is all unbudgeted
Or the HVAC was a line item on the budget?
No, it wasn't.
No, that was also part of the contingency that we, that we, actually, that was in the resolution that Mr. Wimmer just presented to you. So this is all contingency.
The reason I ask, they all appeared as line items, so I assume there was one.
I think that's just the way that the, the resolution
Line item was a little bit
Transfers the money.
But it was a line item in the original budget.
It probably was, but not
It's transferred into a, a building maintenance line item, so that, that line item existed, and that's where we'll expend the money, but we transferred that money into that line item.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the intergovernmental agreement, the IGA with Metro for impact-based transportation system development charges in Oregon City. Nancy?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. At the beginning of our transportation system and development charge update, we met with Mayor, with Metro to discuss how Oregon City could look at impact-based SDCs as they had just completed their alternative, their incentives and alternative financing plans, strategic financing for development. So we agreed to do so and added some scope items to our, to the work we were doing, one of which had to do with adopting a different charge in the regional center area and along transit corridors, which you remember, we adopted that. And there were, there were a number of others that we reviewed and discussed as we did the, as we did the project, and they agreed to pay for some of those items because they wanted to see how the outcome would be. And now that we've completed the project, we have, want to get reimbursed for the money, which is about $11,000 worth of consulting fees. So we are entering the intergovernmental agreement that will enable them to reimburse us for that money.
Might I point out, this is actually money in?
Yes.
Not money out.
Yeah, I move to accept $11,000 from Metro.
Pass this one right away, too. Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there further need for questions or comment? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Next is a piece of housekeeping that we do annually, that we have to recommend, Resolution 910, which certifies our city's eligibility to receive the state shared revenues that we receive annually. Dave, do you have any comments on that?
No, just other than, always in the past, we've had, provided all the services, but this year, we're providing, not providing fire, but we only need to provide four of the six to qualify, so we're still, still qualified.
Mr. Sullivan's giving it up? Go ahead, I'm just saying, he's giving us a thumbs up, so go ahead with your motion.
I move to receive state money from the shared revenues.
Your second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Next is 7L, City Commission approval with Union Pacific Railroad property acquisition for the I-205, 213 Redland Road overcrossing project. Nancy?
Yes, thank you. The, this is an agreement that, it's, it's essentially a preliminary agreement that enables the city to go on the Union Pacific property and conduct various studies, assessments, et cetera. And it, what it does is, it does lay the foundation for potential sale price, which it also allows us to go into essentially a due diligence period of 60 days to further look at the property and make, make final decisions regarding whether or not we indeed would acquire the property. This property is owned by Union Pacific Railroad, and it is, would be acquired for right-of-way for the Jug Handle project. It's on the east side of Highway 213, north of Stein Oil, off of Clackamas River Drive.
Rocky's just commenting on the maps, so. Other questions, for the Commissioner or a motion?
Well, I, I, actually, I'm curious about the maps, the, the one, the one map, the first map we have here, which is this one I'm looking at.
The little one?
The big one?
Mm-hmm.
And then the next page, you have another one. Does, does that second one show more right-of-way than that first one does? It appears to, but I just
The, the one on page seven was our preliminary drawings, which were done using just the tax maps and trying to get a handle on, get a handle on, and trying to describe approximately how much right-of-way we were going to need for this project. And the larger map on page three is what's actually been surveyed. So while they may be slightly different, the one on page three is the actual acquisition property.
The only, the, the thing, and I may be looking at this map wrong, but the only thing that bothers me in terms of the possible Jug Handle placement, and I'm sure it'll it'll all be resolved, but the straight house seems to be right across, across the way from that and that's very historically significant because it's the oldest house in Clackamas County that's on its original foundation.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I, I would hope that we're not going to need any right-of-way acquisition into that piece of property.
We are avoiding that piece of property. And we, that, that whole, the valuation of what needs to be done in terms of making sure we do not have any impact on that historic resource will be done as part of the project.
Good.
Good, and a motion, please. Commissioner Neely?
Yeah, I move to authorize city manager to execute a letter of agreement to acquire property from Union Pacific Railroad Company for the Oregon City State 213-105 Redland Road Exchange.
I'll second that.
A question, well, go ahead.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nocita, now a question?
Yeah, the question is, you, you said this was an initial thing, we're, we're saying we're executing a letter of agreement to acquire, but that is not the acquisition.
That's right, we have a 60-day period to further investigate it and if we have changes to be made, then we present them to UPRR. And within that 60 days, we will be coming back to you with confirmation, additional information or recommendations.
Thank you. Nancy, please poll the commission.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes four, zero. Next, we have the consent agenda, may I have a motion for adoption of those two items, please? The consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent, consent agenda.
Your second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Neely. On the consent agenda, Nancy, please poll for it.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes four, zero.
I always saw how his restroom had a bar.
I know, I thought so, too. Must be, must be change of honor. Mr. Patterson, City Manager?
Just want to remind the commission of the budget meetings on, which will begin on Monday, and those will be at the Pioneer Center. Put at your place this evening, the budget addendum. Again, when you look at the five-year projections, again, just remember, those are trending documents. You may want to look at the general fund budget because, once again, the storm clouds have gathered quickly and I may have left something out that even makes it worse, I've been thinking about that all night long, it's driving me crazy, but I'll have to go look at that. And, Ms. Crushhour, I think, mentioned to us, some of you earlier this evening, that we are getting tremendous stacking on I-205 because of the bridge closure and we'll be talking about ODOT, about what we can do. The only thing I can think of that they might be able to do is the sequencing on the lights there coming off the freeway, which is just going to create the backup on 99, but I think you've got a safety issue out there on 205, so that's all I have, Senator.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, communication, may I do, is there a question about that? Oh, yes, please, please follow up.
Sure. I was wondering if you could give us some more detail on the issue concerning Mr. Herman that Mr. Edgar was speaking of earlier tonight?
Yeah, I don't have the code enforcement letter on my desk, just, I hadn't seen it, I'm just kind of vaguely aware of the issue, that there has been a growing, and this has been an often-on issue over the years, but growing encroachment on the utilization of the city property without any type of agreement to utilize city property, so basically, what we've indicated to Mr. Herman, as I understand, is that he needs to remove his stuff from city property and so, that's the conversation we'll be having.
Okay.
I will indicate, too, in talking with Gladstone, because he operates the museum-owned Gladstone property, but that agreement he has with Gladstone left many years ago, so he really, to my knowledge, there is no agreement for any operation he has out there with any party, but, you know, that was just in a conversation we had a few years ago with Gladstone when we were looking at Cove issues, I don't, maybe he's come up with something else there, but I'm not aware of that. But there's, again, not doing something like that, we do have liability in regards to anything associated with, with utilization or anyone accessing that property if they're injured and, of course, we're aware of this fact, so we've, we've got to resolve that issue, we'll try to work with him best we can to do that.
Thank you. Under Commissioner Communications, we have an appointment this evening, you have at your place a, a new appointment to the Metro Enhancement Committee, which fulfills that committee and that's Toby Porisberg, who's being appointed for, must be a three-year term.
I'll check into that for sure.
Okay, thank you, we'll, we'll make sure that we have that on the, on the website. Are there any communications from Commissioners, from committees that you serve on? We have, just keep watching Urban and Rural Reserves, because it's getting very hot, we'll be talking about that here, also about the properties surrounding the city of Oregon City, so it's just constant meetings on that. Commissioner Smith?
I just have an announcement and it just scared me to death looking at my calendar. The Pioneer Family Festival is coming up very quick and it's May 8th, 9th, and 10th at Clackamas Park in Oregon City and the Teddy Bear Parade is on May 9th and so, we encourage everyone to come down and enjoy the fun in nice sunny weather.
And I will mention that John McLaughlin will be the Grand Marshal.
Yes, yeah, John McLaughlin will be the Grand Marshal of the Teddy Bear Parade and also the event at the McLaughlin House on the 9th, which I believe is one o'clock.
One o'clock.
And so, we encourage everyone to go to that as well.